Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Yarmouth Select Board meeting of October 7, 2025. If you would all please kindly join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're going to start with our 6:00 PM agenda item, which is announcements. We'll start with Mark. Do you have any announcements this evening?
Tonight, thank you.
Dorcas?
No, I don't. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that was a wonderful play reading over the weekend directed by Liz and Drew was also in it.
Drew Kraus.
Yep. He did a remarkable kind of angry scene in it. So, all sorts of Yarmouth talent.
Oh, okay, great.
Congratulations.
I see Mary at the thing. Bob, do you have any announcements?
Yes, actually, I wanted to announce, and the information is in the packet as well, that on Saturday, November 1, 2025, there's the Yarmouth Fall Community Cleanup and Coast Sweep. And folks that are interested in volunteering should plan to meet on November 1 here at the Town Hall at 8:30 AM to collect your supplies and check in. And thanks for everyone's help cleaning up.
Excellent. Also in our packet for information is that we're hiring. So if you are looking for employment, please head to the yarmouth MA.us and see what is available. And also, there's information here about the town of Yarmouth participating in Breast Cancer Awareness Month for October through our Health Department. And that also, that information's on our website. So, and with that, Mary?
Good evening, Mary Maslowski, Town Clerk. I just have a couple of quick announcements for you. First, with special town meeting coming up, just wanted to put people on notice that the last day to register to vote for the November special town meeting is Friday, November 7. The Clerk's office will be open. Obviously, there are regular hours, but we will extend until 5:00 PM for the special voter registration. And then the same thing for the, what's on your agenda tonight is the Old Kings Highway warrant for that election and annual meeting. The last day to register to vote for the Old Kings Highway meeting is Friday, November 14. Again, we will be open regular hours, but extend our hours until 5:00 PM for...
Mary, this says the 17th.
It's the, it should be Friday, the 14th.
Okay.
It's November, the November 17th special town meeting, the last day to register to vote is Friday, November 7. End that for a sentence. The last day to register to vote for the November 17th special town meeting is November 7.
Okay. And the 14th for Old Kings Highway.
Sorry if that was unclear.
Nope.
And then the last announcement, I just wanted to let the public know that anybody looking for transfer station stickers, replacement stickers, selfish permits, beach, obviously don't need beach stickers quite yet. We've now officially made that transition to the Town Clerk's office. So if anybody is needing those services, please see the Town Clerk's counter as opposed to treasure collectors.
Excellent.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Madam Chair, can I just bring up that that microphone sounds like it's echoing?
It's pretty tinny.
Yeah.
Not usually, I don't even want to do about it.
AV people in the back are listening. They will attend to it, but I don't know how to fix it personally.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other announcements tonight? We're going to go to public comment. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to address the board? Yes, Dr. Smith?
Good evening. Mark Smith, Superintendent, Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District. Just wanted, I know there's a couple items on the agenda tonight that either directly or tangentially relate to the school district. So I know you're going to be discussing the reorgan, or the board's responsibility to fill an empty seat on the committee. So I spoke with the Chair last night. If there's anything that the school district can do to support that process, wherever you decide to land on that process, just want to let you know I'm here. I'll be here all night. So if there's anything I can do to help in that process, just let me, let us know. You know, the school district can support. The school committee is willing to participate in any way that you need them to participate. And then, you know, we have a warrant article I know you're going to be discussing, potentially putting items to the warrant. So when it comes to the ME small project, if there's any questions that I can answer, just want to let you know I'll be here to answer any of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Seeing nobody, seeing nobody on Zoom. We're going to move on to our 6:15 item, which is an advertised hearing, but it's advertised for 6:00 PM. So just try to... Good evening. How are you? Come on forward while I, while I find the public hearing notice, and I will read it into the record to open the hearing. "The Town of Yarmouth Select Board, ABBCC, Application for an Amendment/Change of Ownership Interest Hearing. The Yarmouth Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Nealkamp Package Corporation DBA Paradise Wine and Spirits, Nalish Marfadia." Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. "Manager for Change of Stock Interest at 451 Station Ave., South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664 on the previously approved liquor license. Hearing will be held Tuesday, October 7, 2025, in the Hearing Room at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The Select Board meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM, Friday, October 3, in the Select Board's office at Town Hall. It could be submitted electronically to public comment at yarmouth MA.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing." With that, we will open the hearing. Amy, has there been any correspondence received on this application?
Not received any correspondence.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to introduce yourself for the record and tell us a little bit what you're trying to do.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patrick Nickerson, attorney for the applicant employed at the Law Office of John W. Kenny, whose office is in Centreville. To my immediate right is Atumar Patel, who is seeking to acquire 50% of the stock ownership interest in Nealkamp Package Corporation DBA Paradise Wine and Spirits. Mr. Patel has worked at the business for five years on a full-time basis and is essentially seeking to become a partner to the business, graduating from the rank of full-time employee, which he presently is. Mr. Marfadia, through our office, has negotiated a stock purchase agreement, which we've submitted in your materials, which should be in your files for this evening, detailing the terms and conditions of the stock purchase agreement. And we're asking for your approval this evening to change the ownership interest with, in the form of the ABBCC application for amendment.
Perfect.
That's really the sum and substance of our request this evening. Happy to answer any questions to the extent there are any. Thank you.
Yep. It's mostly a formality, as the board will see. The packet is complete. I've asked Amy to put the checklist in our packet for information because it's always helpful for us with the requirements. Your certificate of insurance is here, and everything is complete. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this application, either for or against? Seeing nobody, I will take a motion, close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any board members have any questions or comments?
No.
Take a recommendation, take a motion to approve?
I move we approve the application as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Sign looks good.
A sign?
They have a fairly new sign. For a long time, there was no sign. It looks great.
Oh, good. Good to know. All right. We have one more application before us tonight, and I will read the public notice into the record in, if anybody wants to come forward on this. "The Town of Yarmouth Select Board, ABBCC, Application for Amendment/Change of Ownership Hearing. The Yarmouth Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application for a change of ownership interest from Ryan Family Amusement LLC William Campbell Manager located at 1067 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. Ownership will change from Ryan Family Amusement LLC to FEC Holdings LLC, which has a business address of 1209 Orange Street, Wilmington, Delaware. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 7, in the Hearing Room at Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The Select Board meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, October 3, in the Select Board's office at Town Hall. It could be submitted electronically. Public comment at yarmouth MA.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing." Amy, has there been any correspondence on this application?
No, there has not.
Okay. If you'd like to take a moment to introduce yourself, we just had, we're very familiar with this license. We just had it before us for another action fairly recently. So if you want to just introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do?
Sure. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Paul Tardif, an attorney in Yarmouth Port. Seated with me is Bill Campbell, President of Ryan Family Amusements LLC. And that entity holds an annual all-alcohol license over at 1067 Route 28, right up at the street. And you'll see that Mike Rossi's name is on most of the applications. I'm working with him for these transfers. And as you indicated, we were here in June, actually, June 24th. Seemed, seems a long time ago when there was summer, I guess, but we requested approval of a change of corporate name. What's that?
The weather's probably nicer now than...
It's beautiful, yeah. We had, we had requested an approval for a change of corporate name and structure on that license to go from Ryan Family Amusements, Inc. to LLC at that time. Now we're back before you to request approval of change of officers, directors, and LLC managers, and a change of ownership interest. First of all, Ryan Family Amusements LLC will continue to own the license. The manager of that liquor license, Peter Campbell, is going to continue to be that, act in that role. But because of the anticipated, I guess, bittersweet sale of that business, the current request is needed. So, and just so you'll know why we did this in two steps, this was, we had approached the ABBCC up in Boston first because of the complexity of this deal, and they had recommended that we do this in steps as we have. So that's why we're back here now. We've also been working with them up in Boston to try to get approval for all the financial and organizational matters ahead of time. We do have six other, well, six locations that are going to change hands as well. So that's why it's a little complex, but we wanted to get back before you and make sure that you understood that. There is a nice, the application's lengthy, I know.
But this... Amy did a good job of culling out of how many pieces, 600 pieces?
640, I think I saw, yeah. This is the most important one, the flow chart for the new owners. So you can take a look at that. But as I indicated, the license is going to stay the same with the same people involved, and a lot of the same people from Ryan Family Amusements LLC will be staying on. So you'll still see those familiar faces at the facility. So I think that the transfer can be approved. If you have any questions, Mr. Campbell and I are here to help you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Again, the packet's complete. Everything's here. It's merely a formality required by the ABBCC. Certificate of insurance is here. I will see if anybody in the public has any comment, either for or against this application.
Madam Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there anybody on the board that has any comments or questions on the application?
But I had no idea you had six locations. I'm sitting here quite impressed.
Yes, it's, it's growing, and but you'll never, nothing's going to change. It's going to be the same familiar faces, myself, my brother, and others. And we're just happy to have this opportunity.
Take a motion to approve the application as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good seeing you all. Thank you.
Kathy, are you ready? Perfect. We're a little ahead of schedule, but we are going to move to our 6:45 agenda item, which is zoning items with the planning board. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
Bob's going to get you teed up here.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. I'm Joan Crowley, Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm joined by our Town Planner Kathy Williams. And I believe one of our Planning Board members, Deirdre Gayquin, is with us tonight. Thank you, Deirdre. Thank you for this opportunity to review the updated draft zoning bylaw amendments that we've prepared for the 2025 special town meeting in November. The Planning Board would like to also thank the public, who have participated and informed us at many of our meetings on these two articles, including the public hearing we most recently had on September 17. Their interest in participation is gratefully appreciated. In your packets this evening is a PowerPoint presentation that Kathy will provide for you that provides some background on these two amendments and how they have changed since the last time we met with you on August 12. Also included is the current draft language for the articles that we propose to be included in the warrant. The amendments address two provisions in the zoning bylaw, Section 202 Retail Sales of Lobsters in Residential Zoning Districts, and Section 401 On-Site Boat Storage, also in residential zoning districts. The Planning Board has taken preliminary votes on both of these amendments, but will deliberate further at our meeting on October 15 regarding your comments this evening and any other comments we receive from the public. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kathy for a brief presentation on where we are with this.
As Joanne mentioned, since we met with you on the 12th, the Planning Board's really been trying to fine-tune the articles to address comments that we have received from both the board as well as residents, and then trying to ensure that we're protecting our neighborhoods. We have provisions in for that. And then just kind of working towards an article that we think will get passed at special town meeting. Should you turn it on? So the way the article is written right now is it allows, the purpose of it is to allow for retail sale of live lobsters only via special permit in residential zoning districts with some special provisions, as well as the addition of that definition for fishing. So special provisions really are is that you're limited to one special permit per parcel. We're allowing it in residential zoning districts except for our more restrictive RS40, which is in our historic district area along the Bass River. It's limited to sales that are of lobsters that are personally caught by the resident of the property. We don't want to have a live lobster farmer's market in residential neighborhoods. We also want to be sure that they're adhering to all of the applicable local, state, and federal regulations. There's a lot of state regulations with regard to commercial fishing license, commercial retail, as well as our local Health Department inspections. We want to be sure that the special permit expires upon sale of the property. So it's really just with the person getting the special permit. It doesn't carry with the property. The sign is limited to one non-illuminated A-frame. I know there was a question about illumination last time. Basically, a sandwich board of six square feet located on the property during hours of operation, and those hours will be set via the special permit. So specifically, just kind of going over what were the changes made since August 12. We limited it to the sale of live lobsters only and not all seafood. We did talk to the Division of Marine Fisheries and got some additional information from them. And there were some concerns about, you know, smells from dead fish. Also, there's certain finfish like tuna and mackerel that are histamine-producing, and you need to be extremely careful in how you handle them, or you could get people very, very sick. That's not something we really wanted to start getting into. And also, the sale of mollusks like clams and cohogs and scallops, they can only be sold by the harvester to a wholesaler. They can't be sold retail. So it was really kind of made that a bit of a moot point. So all those things considered, we just decided that let's get to the problem, solve the problem of the live lobsters and limited it to that. We also eliminated a reference to it being sold whole or not processed, as it is limited to live lobsters only, add an expiration of the special permit upon transfer of the property, and then did specify that the sign would be non-illuminated. As Joanne mentioned, we had our public hearing on September 17. There was about 25 people online and in person. We had three written comments on this zoning article, support for the, from a neighbor of Mr. Tully's, noting that he hasn't had any particular disturbance. There's also a written comment about article opens up the sale of lobsters to whomever. Instead of just this one individual, it would be allowed to anyone who has live lobsters to sell in a retail in a residential neighborhood. And then there was someone who was in opposition of the article. They were concerned about neighborhood impacts, signage. It would be setting a precedent and other regulatory concerns. Three comments that were received at the meeting was Attorney Poloni, who represents Mr. Tully, supported the amendment. There's also other general comments in support of the article. There's one person, one gentleman, who noted that the special permit would create more bureaucracy, and then that fee is really just another tax. So the Planning Board really felt that this was fairly well-vetted, and with little discussion, the Planning Board voted to recommend the zoning article, five to zero. If you want to talk about each article individually or go through the presentation?
I don't feel we have to talk about them individually. We have spoken about them previously amongst the board.
Was there any discussion about traffic backed up during these times impeding? Was there any conversation about how you manage traffic?
I think that a lot of it would be regulated through the special permit. I think a lot of it would be related to the specific property that that's an issue. There's some properties where it's not that big of a deal. You come in, you pull into the driveway, you purchase your lobster, and you head out. Or maybe you pull to the side of the road and you pick it. So that didn't really seem to be a concern.
No, it didn't. And the neighbors of Mr. Tully, and there were many of them, who were in favor of this particular change, didn't bring up any kind of a traffic issue in the neighborhood that I recall.
And, Madam Chair, yeah, first of all, I want to thank you once again for all the time and energy and effort that you've put into both of these articles. And I'm glad to see that you've narrowed it, and you did confirm with the Division of Marine Fisheries that there isn't some other broader issue that we need to concern ourselves with, that I think this is properly done, properly written, and properly structured. And my hope is, is that it'll go through smoothly at town meeting. So thank you.
Well, I would like to thank you, Ms. Forrest, for bringing our attention to the Marine Fisheries and those regulations, because Kathy jumped on it right away. And we got, you know, some really good information back about what can be done and what can't be done. So that's why we limited to live lobsters. The rest of it could be very complicated.
I just wonder if, has any other community had just this? I just worry about it being so specific. You know, when you try to get a zoning article passed by the AG's office and it being so specific, I just wonder if it's going to limit our ability. That's why, that's why I think we needed to look at all the other ones. And I'm just curious if you know of any other town that has it specific just to one.
Not that I know. But the article has been vetted by Town Council, and he didn't, we specifically asked that question. But again, it's not, it may be limited to the type of seafood that you can sell, but it is open. It's not spot zoning. It's open to all residential zoning districts except for the RS40.
Understood, but it is very specific. I mean, we're, when you tailor zoning to a particular parcel, that's what they pick up on. And although there may be more than one that we're trying to address here, which I think is very important, that we need to make sure that people understand that. That's why I worry about, you know, in his situation, obviously, the parking's fine. You're not right off of a main road backing up traffic. But I, you know, I'm concerned about how that would be handled in other situations. So, but if the Board of Appeals...
It is spoken to in the, in the text that I read, that it's, all of those considerations have to be reopened and reevaluated for every case.
But it's special permit, which provides a lot of protections, and that's being sure that it doesn't cause any congestion and undue nuisance in the neighborhood. That's part of the criteria that the ZBA would be looking at.
Yep.
And the one thing we were careful, what we didn't want it to be is parcel-specific, but it is product-specific. And we don't know if there are other, you're absolutely right, Madam Chair, that there may be other communities that have different, you know, product-specific, but we're not aware of them here on the Cape.
Just hope it passes the muster. Okay. Seeing nothing, we'll go to the next one?
So I think the, the article that saw the most change was the boat parking, which we're really trying to get back to resolving the core issue. For people in the public who may not know, right now, our current regulations for camping and recreation equipment, it needs to either be parked inside a garage, or it shall be parked or stored to the rear of the front line of the building. So basically, to the side or the rear of your property. The issue that's come to our attention is that some residents really can't get to that side or rear of their properties due to, maybe they don't have any side yard. Maybe they have a beautiful, large tree that they don't want to have to cut down. Maybe there's some steep slopes or some other prohibiting issues that are very unique to their particular property. So the boat parking, as it's currently written, would allow parking for one boat in the driveway during the active boating season in residential neighborhoods via a special permit just for those properties with limited or restricted access to the side or rear of their property. So this isn't just for someone who can do it, they just don't want to do it. This is something that's very specific to someone who has a physical feature of their property that prohibits them from doing it. Again, it's via a special permit to allow for that public notification and a better notification. It's limited to one boat per parcel, lawfully registered either to the owner of the property or the resident. Maximum length of the boat is 28 feet, located on a registered trailer. And then the boat shall be parked in a driveway without creating any traffic or fire safety issues, and making sure that there's adequate remaining onsite parking for the property, and that can be demonstrated to the ZBA. We don't want people parking their boat in the driveway and then having to park their cars in all these strange locations or in front of their neighbor's house, and then they would be upset by that. Currently, it is limited to April 1 through November 1. And one of the things that was added was, again, as with the lobster sale, special permit expires upon transfer of the property. So the key change is, is that's related to limited, limited to properties with unique features or conditions that prevent people from locating their boat to the side or the rear. Again, it requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it's not by right, as the previous one was written, and special permits would expire upon transfer of the property. So on the 17th of the public hearing, we did get one written comment regarding allowing the boat storage by right during the voting season, and then making a special permit during the winter. At the public hearing, there is support for that by-right suggestion during the boating season, but the majority of the comments were really related to concerns about that seasonality clause, and noting that there's limited places for you to store your boat off-season. We are a boating community, the cost related to it, and then just creating more enforcement issues for the Building Department. So this is the one that the Planning Board spent the most time deliberating on, for all those particular reasons, also taking into consideration concerns of the neighborhood, and trying to develop an article that really meets that core issue and has a strong chance of passing at town meeting. So the Planning Board had preliminary vote to recommend the zoning article as it's written right now with the seasonality, five to zero. But they did know that we were coming to you. We're looking for some comments from the Select Board about that seasonality. The Planning Board is interested in considering maybe extending it to year-round, and we're kind of looking for some input from the Select Board and their comments on that.
Can I just ask a question about that? So this isn't, it says boat parking, but it talks about camping or recreational equipment. So how did you carve that out? It says Section 401.1.2, if camping or recreational equipment is parked or stored outside. So any of these, so now it's, it's...
Nope, it's only boat. It's only boat.
How do you, how did you differentiate?
It says if a boat cannot be parked or stored to the rear or line of the property. So it specifically calls out a boat in the article itself.
Okay, I'm just reading what you gave here.
Right. And also included in the packet is the actual article that's in the warrant.
It says Article 2 Boat Parking, Current Regulation.
That's what it says right now, so people understand the regulation.
So you changed the definition?
I'm not changing the definition of recreational equipment, which includes boats, but I'm just saying that there's an exception for boats that meet this criteria.
But not recreational vehicles?
Correct. Not all recreational vehicles, just boats.
Does anybody else have any questions?
You're looking for comments, right, from us? Yeah, I think I was pretty clear at the last Select Board meeting that, from my perspective, I'm pretty much in sync with the Building Inspector and the Building Department regarding the seasonality. They've recommended that that language be stricken. I think it makes sense. There's a cost. There's an aggravation. They don't have the time. They don't have the personnel. You know, the town having the boat police out and about hunting down, you know, residents, I think is a bit of an issue. It has been an issue. And from what I heard from the testimony from the Building Department is that they just don't have the resources to do that. So I don't want to see us at a town meeting having to fund more staff to hire the boat police. I think that's, that's an issue. Other than that, I think you've done a wonderful job in looking at this issue, taking testimony, getting comments, doing an analysis. I am concerned that Yarmouth would be the only, the only community that we can identify that has something like this on the books. So, but I recognize... But I recognize and appreciate the chairman's comments at the, at the planning board. I think you made it very clear you'd be willing to come back and revisit that. So you had accepted it with a sort of an understanding that you're open to revisiting it and coming back, and hopefully thinking that this compromise would be sufficient enough to make it easier to get through town meetings. So I completely understand your rationale for structuring it this way. My preference would be if I were writing it, I would delete that language. And, like I said, I very much appreciate the work of our inspection department and the work that they do, and I fully support their recommendations. So that's, that's where I come down on that. So, thank you.
Dorcas?
I, like Mark, would support the idea of taking out the seasonality. I think it does put an undue burden onto the building department, which is pretty stretched as it is right now. And a lot of people want access to that boat all year round. I mean, a lot of people out there do use their boats in the off-season. I've seen it happen. So I would prefer to see the seasonality taken out.
I want the boats to have a happy place year-round. And it does seem that there are so many boats that there may not even be places to harbor them in Yarmouth if everybody is forced to store them for the winter. So I guess I would say I'm in favor of it with the year-round parking ability on the person's property. And that would save the building inspector and his staff the craziness of having to go around. I mean, they have to police so much already. Thank you for doing all this.
I have a question regarding the special permit. What's the lifetime of that special permit?
As long as the person continues to own the property.
So that means that a boat could be parked and just allowed to fall apart?
Right. That's what's going to happen anyway.
If it's registered.
Registered.
It's properly registered, and is on a registered trailer, and we send it an excise tax.
I guess that's my big concern about removing the seasonality, is that you've now created an opportunity for everybody to just, they don't have to deal with the boat anymore. Just put it on your property and let it fall apart.
I think they want to use it, though.
Well, there are many people who are going to want to use it, and many people who are not. So I think that's the overarching issue with taking out the seasonality. If it were like a license that you have to renew, but it's not. So I think, yeah, you've, you've given, a door is now open for letting boats rot on your property, which is an old Cape Cod style.
Authenticity is what we go for.
Yeah, if I could respond to that, Madam Chair? I appreciate the comment, I do, but if, but the boat has to be registered. That's what we're talking about, is boats that are registered, correct?
Boat has to be registered, and it has to be on a registered trailer.
Exactly.
It can't be on blocks.
Right.
It needs to be on a registered trailer.
I think the planning board has made enough provision in it so that we're not going to get in the business of, you know, encouraging people to let boats rot. If they're going to let them rot, they're going to let them rot, and they're not going to register them.
Well, quite frankly, right now, they can. Under the current zoning, you can park your boat behind the front line of your house and let it sit there forever.
That's not going to change.
That's not changing. That is not changing.
That's part of the point that I'm trying to make here, that there are aspects of this that are just not going to change.
But there's also the difference, if I, if I can get clarification, that in this case, something that's on the front of the property has to be, that has to be registered every year, which is not the case for the side and rear.
That's true.
That is correct.
So that's what you're banking on.
And actually, they're registered every other year.
Every two years, the trailers are annual, though.
Yeah, but the boat is registered every two years.
Do they have to bring the trailer to the registry? Or do they just go and basically say?
It's a license plate.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that you've done. My position doesn't change on it. I just, with all due respect to the building department, I understand they're busy, but we have a lot of eyesores in our town that are already a problem. This isn't going to make it any better, any easier. It's unfortunate, but they have a job to do. And if they need more resources, they need more resources. This isn't going to make or break a full-time person. We have, we have people here who have pushed us to have blight policies, because we have so many neighborhoods that look, and there's just, it's not, it's not a good look. And I'm very concerned with adding this. That's no disrespect to the people who've requested it. I am a firm believer that this kind of thing belongs before town meeting, and let them make a decision on what they want in their town. But for me, you know, I don't want to look out in my neighbor's front yard and look at an old dilapidated boat, because that's what will happen. They're all over town now, and again...
It's going to be in the front yard.
Yeah, so that's, that's my opinion. And again, I think it's, you know, I think you're making a, something for a particular person, and, you know, as I said before, and I'll say it again, there's a lot of people with RVs in this town that have the same restrictions, the same, you know, I understand, we're a boating community, I get it. They have, they have to, they have undue burdens of having to store it or store it behind the house, just like everybody else. Why is a boat different? I just, personally, I can't see it, and I don't want that all over town. Because when we do the boat, the next thing is going to be the RVs. And that's not, it's, it's just, they're all, they're registered too, they're all registered. Have you seen what some of them on the sides of houses look like? It's awful. Some of them are awful. So it's just not the look I want for our town. I'm, I would, I would tend to err more towards being more restrictive. Unfortunately, I understand people own their property. But, you know, if, if we can't manage some of the real bad properties that we already have, this isn't going to help it. That's how I feel. But that's just me. Again, I believe it goes, it should go before town meeting. I believe it's the people's place to make the decision on it, but that's just my personal feeling. Anybody else have anything else to say? I appreciate all your work on this.
I just had a question, and there's, there's sort of no official way to tell us. But has anybody ever noticed a rotting boat in the visible part of a side yard?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I can give you a list of it.
Just wondering, because, you know, I'm on a non-boating block.
Yes, it happens. They're all over.
On the other hand, if they're going to be a mode of escape during sea level rise, they're going to have to be seaworthy. So maybe people will start to repair them.
Well, thank you very much.
We will be taking, we don't have a vote on this, it's just an update. So we, at some point in time, will...
We'll vote, yeah.
...take a position. I don't know if you have the final, are you fin, I know you've made a recommendation with where you're at, are you still?
No, we've had a preliminary recommendation. We'll be meeting again on the 15th, and at that meeting, we'll be taking our final vote. And you will see that there are planning board members who are of different opinions on this.
Yeah, and that's a great thing, that's how we get a better, we get a better product from it. Our board, any board that has differing opinion makes us do better work, so.
And if I just can make one other comment.
Absolutely.
Coming up on your agenda is the, your letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals with regard to the 40B project. And I'd just like to compliment you on that, and supporting our position on that. I thought it was an outstanding letter, and very forceful, and the planning board really appreciates it. So I just wanted to mention that publicly, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We also just mentioned that you do a tremendous amount of work, the planning board, and we thank each and every one of you for what you do. You're right out there, thank you.
We're having a little bit of fun.
Yes, we will.
Back with the local, the local comprehensive plan.
Oh, that's fun, yeah, yeah.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Next up, we have the Library Building Committee update.
Would you guys like to start for presentations? I've got the two. You want to start with Matt?
No.
You can start with yours?
Yep. Hey, Matt. Have a seat. Yes.
Good evening.
Hello.
What are you, thank you for coming. Thank you for having us, Judy Constarver. I'm the chair of the Library Building Committee, and I have many members. I haven't really taken head count, but you could all just put your hands up. It's a very active group, and Dorcas. So we were here last on June 24th, and we were talking about sites. So we're back here today to give you a run-up from what we've done since then. Matt Odens is here from our architectural firm, and we have other support people behind me if you have other kinds of questions. So, here we go.
Well, I just want to say, and I know I said it, Judy, at the beginning when you first walked in before the meeting started, a lot of this information, the RSD associates, I believe, and some other documentation we just received today, and so the board has not had the opportunity to really digest it or go through it. So I apologize for that. But I'm not sure we're going to be able to really, I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity, but I just want the public to know that we may be a little bit at a loss with that information, so.
All right, understood. We were trying to be sensitive to getting information to you, so some of that was just rushed this afternoon. So I know it was late to you. Hopefully, in our presentation, we'll be able to pick out some of those salient points in that we're there. And... Okay. So just where our money has come from. At the annual town meeting in spring 2024, $150,000 was approved as the matching portion to the $100,000 grant that we received from the Massachusetts Library Commission to move forward with site selection and concept design. So that was our charge, was to present a design with our application to MBLC by December of this year in order to be eligible to receive additional funding toward this project. So that's kind of the nugget that we've been working with. And throughout the presentation, you'll see dates and dollar amounts in bold, so you have a way to go back and see those, if you're looking at those. And what am I doing wrong here?
It's picky.
Thank you. All right. So we did hold a very well-attended public hearing on June 17, and then we met as a committee the next day, June 18, and presented the site across, and we voted. And then that resulted in LBC presenting the parcel across 28 from Town Hall. And at that time, we were referring to it as the Simpkins Field. So when you go back and look at the meetings and documentation, that was the designated term we were using. We've since been corrected and are calling it the Joshua Seers Playground. So the Select Board approved that site when we came to you last, on June 24. Then our next step was the concept designs, which were based on information that we had at the time, and were presented at two public listening sessions on August 13. And then these designs were displayed at both libraries and here at Town Hall, and there were comment cards available. We got very few comments back. They were like, I like number three, I like number four. We documented them, but there were very few comments that we got back. In the meantime, there were public speakers who came before you and came directly to the LBC. And they presented information that was both very credible and supported. So they were quoting past town meetings, past, there was a lot to do with probate court, and how we, as a town, came to acquire the main parcel across. And they had information regarding the historical intentions and the restrictions that could apply to part of the site that was designated the Joshua Seers Playground. So that's basically parcel 50, which we'll see later, and I think you've seen before, the differences between parcel 50 and 60. So on September 8th, we received a statement from Town Council Joseph Ruttolo, and that was shared with the LBC leadership, and it said, so the question that was posed to him was, is this restricted? And this was from our town manager to get some direction. And his response was, there is no specific verbiage required to invoke Article 97 protection. So that's what he's saying about how Article 97 works. But I think from the language in the article, to lay out and construct a playground, and that it has been used as a playground, is enough to invoke an Article 97 protection. So since the LBC has been told that a final legal report would not be forthcoming until December, we had to reevaluate our situation, and we were very fortunate in this. But it seemed like we should respect all of this stuff that had gone on in the past. The property has been owned by the town for 100 years, and the restrictions are there. And personally, I went over to the library, and I pulled out all town meeting records, and we can find it, it's there. And understanding that Town Council is wanting to do their job completely, but it's kind of like, there are enough red flags here for us to respect that. We also then drew MBLC into conversations, our OPM, which is our owner's project manager, Accenture, and our architects. And through all of these conversations, LBC learned that due to the parameters of the funding we had applied for, the MBLC would consider only the site that we had identified in an updated application. However, that turned out not to be a problem for us, because fortunately, there was a second parcel in the site. So the site was this big area, and it had another parcel. So we were able to say, oh, good, let's look at that. So with that information, the committee and Odens Allo moved toward a concept design on the remaining portion of the site, and Matt will be presenting that tonight. So for the purposes of a charge we were given, and for the funds allocated, the LBC is looking to proceed with this concept phase. We have the money to do this, and we want to go forward with this concept and our deadline, because we want to ensure our eligibility for the next phase of the library funding. So that's kind of like what we're working on here. And I want to just hit the pause button a little, because the analogy I've been using is, it's like you have your English term paper due, and it needs to be done by December, and we want to keep doing this. However, we're aware that there are other questions out in the community, and we want to address those as well. So that's kind of what the scurrying was, is to get you information today. So the main idea that we've been, that we've heard, and that was expressed at your board meeting, was the possibility of reuse of the MacArthur School Building. And this has been reviewed by the Library Building Committee in lengthy and detailed conversations. We've spent a lot of time looking at this and kicking this around. So our proposal to you is tonight, and we hope you get your blessing, is to continue the design phase we've been in. So we're using the MBLC funds that have already been approved. These are ours. If we just let them sit, then we won't have done what we could do for the town. And then to look at the MacArthur building reuse as a separate question, that doesn't have the pressure of the December deadline. Have I been clear so far?
Can I just reiterate, spit it back at you?
Sure thing.
The grant would not support a reuse of MacArthur. Thank you.
Correct. Okay. Just the one we've applied for does not...
Right.
Okay, does...
But others might?
I don't know.
This grant is offered every five years, maybe, so.
Okay.
It's a, it's not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but it is a rare opportunity. It's not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but it is a rare opportunity.
And you've been working on it for two years.
Yeah, okay. So we wanted to respect the MBLC process while understanding that there are other questions in the community. I think that's been our position all along, is we've been very open to what the community has to say to us and to listen to that. So with respect to the reuse of the MacArthur School Building, here are a few of the issues we've uncovered.
Can you just, I'm sorry to stop you, but you keep using a lot of terms that people may not know or understand at home. So can you, I know the Library Building Committee is LBC, can you talk about what MBLC is so people understand?
Sure. So the MBLC is the body in the...
Massachusetts Building and Library.
Library.
Board of Library.
Board of Library Commissioners.
To know what we're saying when...
Yes.
The grant makers.
Yes. Thank you, Tracy. Yes, they hold the purse. Was there anything else that I need to clear up?
No, the OPM, you did say what that was.
Okay. So while at first glance reuse may seem to be a cost-saving move, there are many angles to consider. So we did have an initial assessment on September 30, just last week, and that was distributed to you late today. That was done by an engineering team, and the cost for the town was $4,600 to do that assessment. And this is a first-glance assessment. If we were to go into a full evaluation, that would include much more detail and therefore increased cost. That would be estimated to be $50,000, maybe up to $100,000 to get the kind of information that would be needed for that kind of reconstruction. So since the MBLC funds, the town would be eligible for, what Matt just said, those funds that were eligible for only cover new construction. They could not be applied to a reuse project. So those would just be gone. Okay, so we need to take into consideration that in 2022, over $4 million was poured into that building to make renovations, addressing the building's continued use as a school. And I received information to correct the slides, so if you want to get out your pencils and cross this off. $2 million came from Cape Cod Collaborative, and they had another $3 million influx, but it did not come from the town of Yarmouth. However, there was over $4 million poured into that building just three years ago by Cape Cod Collaborative. They got the funding, and they ran the show. So change of use is a term that we've come to be familiar with, and changing the use of the building would trigger a long list of modifications, upgrades due to various code requirements and the needs of a library structure. So examples of code requirements would be looking at the HVAC, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, plumbing, electrical, energy codes, fire suppression needs. The building was built in 1950, so there are potentially hazardous materials in there that would have to be dealt with.
This doesn't make any sense to me. So we have children in there instead as a school? I mean, it's, you know what I'm...
But it's a change of use.
I understand that, but you would think a school would be the most restrictive change of use and safest part of a building than a library. But that's just, I understand what you're saying. It just, in logical sense, it doesn't make sense to me.
Understood. So when you initiate a change, then you have to come up to present, where I think that $4 million brought it up to...
2022 code.
Depending on what they, yes, there have been recent code changes, and brought it up to what would meet their needs at that time. One of the biggest issues is accessibility. And so I want to stick with that, even though I'm talking about, I'll talk about that a little more later. So another concern is when you have a two-story building, there are accessibility issues. That building in particular, and this is explained in more detail in the handout that you got today, the lower level is actually seven feet underground. And so there is a lot of need for chair lifts or stair lifts or modifications to get in and out. But one of the other things that goes along with accessibility is egress. And so when a library has meetings and those kinds of events, egress is also important. So we have a building that would be looking to represent our town, our library, our main library, and we really want to have a building that people can get in and out of comfortably and in various ways. The last slide had a little bit on it about the live load, too. That's not exactly a code requirement, but it's an issue for libraries. So when you have a school, the live load, in other words, the people moving around load, is 50 pounds per square foot. So you think a little body is moving around. In a library, the requirement, and this is fairly recent, is 150 pounds per square foot. So books are just static, but they're there, and they, we all know, we've all moved. Books are heavy. So it's not really a code thing, but it's something that is definitely a factor when we're looking at this. So just a reminder that as Massachusetts taxpayers, we have already contributed to that money. So the pots that the MBLC has to distribute, we as a community, we as taxpayers, have contributed to. So we definitely want to use the money we have now, but this is really our chance to look at this rather than wait for another opportunity. We're really right in line to get this, and if we don't use it, what they do is just take the next applicant, and they would be the ones.
And then would Yarmouth go to the bottom of the queue?
No, you have to start all over.
No, just start all over.
All over.
At the next cycle.
Five years later.
So. Any other questions? Okay. So we do have a presentation from Matt tonight, too. And he's going to talk about this aspect of staying in the design mode, finishing out our $250,000 worth of money and direction and what that project is, and how the architects, really, were able to pivot and look at that second site and say, "All right, what are the opportunities here? A couple of problems, but let's see what could work on this site." So that's where Matt's going tonight. He has some other info, too, maybe.
Thanks, Judy. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to start, actually. I don't want to be too repetitive, but I want to underline some of the points that Judy made, and recognizing that you just got that report, Madam Chair, that you referenced, that's the structural report from an analysis that was done, a visual inspection that was done this week. So I just want to sort of summarize that report for you now, and then I'll mention a couple of the architectural considerations, and then we'll move into where we are at the moment. So just reiterating a couple of the things that Judy mentioned, the live load requirement. Schools, actually, the 50 pounds a square foot is a code-required structural load, and so the structural engineer is quite confident that that is the loading that was used to design it. There is no redundancy built into the building based on her assessment, so that existing structure can't just support more load than it was designed for. It is unlikely that that's the case. The requirement by the MBLC, again, this is not a code requirement, but it's a reasonable requirement for a library, the 150 pounds a square foot. So basically tripling the load. The implication here being that there's a pretty significant modification of the structure, and this is the upper floor structure. The lower floor is slab-on-grade, the upper floor is framed. So it's that upper floor. There isn't a lot of headroom in the lower level. It would mean increasing the depth of the structure, so we would reduce the head height further. There are other considerations about that lower level architecturally that I'll touch on in a minute, but from a structural standpoint, that's one of the key things. Building layout also is designed as a school. It has relatively small rooms. The structural system, a combination of columns, load-bearing CMU walls, are spaced to allow for easy layout of classrooms and smaller spaces. Libraries tend to have fewer, much larger spaces. In order to replan the building to accommodate the library program, we would have to pretty dramatically change the structural layout that supports that upper floor. So again, that's adding a significant cost. Because of the change in use and bringing the building up to current code, it would need to meet current seismic code. There is no lateral structural system in the building. It's from 1950. That code didn't exist. To bring it up to code today, we would have to add a lateral system. That means, kind of in layman's terms, we would have to insert welded steel frame inside that existing building to pick up that lateral load. That would have to be tied into the existing structure. It's a costly endeavor, and that's what it would take to shore that building up and have it meet the seismic code. That seismic code requirement would be triggered by the change of use. So if you simply continue to use it as a school, renovate it, maintain it, assuming you're not doing a Level 3 renovation of that building, you're not triggering the sort of larger requirement in terms of code. I mentioned the lower-level clearance. In terms of architectural concerns, we would be inheriting all of the physical limitations of that building. Its footprint, its floor relationships, its structural conditions, its bathrooms, its systems, everything about that building, we are either inheriting or we're having to replace or modify in some way to have it meet the needs of a library. Judy touched on accessibility. I think, and this is not a code requirement, but as a firm that specializes in public buildings and buildings that serve the public good, that are important civic buildings for a town, I think fundamentally, it's a problem to have a building that is not universally accessible, that is a public library. And I think the challenge of MacArthur with the kind of split-level arrangement, as soon as you walk in the door, you have to make a choice to either go up or down. There has to be an easy way for patrons to do it. It complicates access. It complicates egress. And I think we would be fighting that at every turn during the conversion of that to a public library. So again, we could satisfy the code, but I think it would be an unsatisfactory solution to what should be a really important civic building for the town. Judy talked about energy code compliance. Obviously, we would have to comply with all codes. In terms of the investment that was made in 2022, I think a good portion of that investment would be lost. I think that the things like lighting, ceilings would come out, lighting would come out. You'd have a whole new arrangement of spaces. So the layout of sprinklers, the routing of HVAC ductwork, all of that would come out. So you would lose the investment that was made by reconfiguring that into a very different building type. At the end of the day, and this is based on nothing but our experience, our intuition, and conversations that we've had with contractors and our cost estimator, who we work with quite a bit, our suspicion is that the cost of this project would be very close to, if not equal to, the cost of new construction. And so it's not a silver bullet. We're going to do this for half the cost of a new building. We think it would be quite close. Now, that would have to be borne out by further work. This was an initial assessment that we did for the structural, really what would be required here. And as Judy alluded, this is something that could happen. I mean, we have the time to do this between now and Spring Town Meeting. What has to happen is a full assessment of the building. We need to have an envelope consultant, a mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineer. All of the various disciplines would need to examine that from their perspective and develop a list of improvements that we'd be obligated to pursue and then price that, so we understand what's the cost. Similarly, I think we would need to do a kind of architectural assessment. How, you know, what would it look like to put a library in here? What would you have to do? What would those spaces look like? Does it fit in that container? How much structural reworking would that require? And again, I think if you go through that exercise, that could be quantified at a very high level, but it would give you some measure of comfort in terms of the cost. So I'll leave MacArthur at that. I do want to get into the project itself.
Just before you leave, and just to remember that that then is not eligible for the funding. So that would be shifting the funding onto the town.
That's right. And our initial take on the funding is, and we won't know this until we have cost estimates for the proposed project, but based on the funding formulas that we've gotten from the MBLC, we're projecting the grant amount to be somewhere in the $10 million to $13 million range. So it's not an insignificant amount. On top of that, there's about $400,000 at stake, which would be the reimbursement that the state gives you for what they call the green incentive grant. So if you meet certain criteria, it's net zero, or it's lead gold, or I think there are three different compliance paths that they offer, they will give you a reimbursement after the fact of another, up to, I think, $500,000 is 3% of the grant award, but in our case, this would be about $400,000. So that would be on top of the $10 to $13 million grant. So just to put it in perspective. In terms of schedule, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands kind of where we are in this process. Building projects take a long time, as I'm sure you all know. We are in that very first segment there, feasibility study, six-month study. We're about two months in. We have a December deadline of this year to submit the requirements that satisfy the grant to the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners for their review, which will happen in January. We expect to get comments from them by the end of January, at which point we might have to make some changes. We might not. The project will be estimated at that point, and then we will have satisfied their requirements. And the next step would be to go to town meeting to vote, to accept the grant, commit the additional funding necessary. In that time, between the end of December and Spring Town Meeting, I think there's ample time, should the town decide to pursue further study of the MacArthur Building. So that is a possibility. I think there's the time to do that. So by the time we go to Spring Meeting, we're well-informed in terms of what the various options are. After Town Meeting, I'm told that the MBLC has a June deadline. So May Town Meeting, June deadline to sign a contract with the state to accept that money and start design. Design for a project of this type typically is about 12 months, so that would take us from spring of 2026 to spring of 2027. Bidding generally is two months. We'd start construction in, you know, fall of 2027, and probably 18 months of construction, roughly finish around the middle of 2029. So that gives you a kind of rough idea of the schedule and sort of where we are with the tip of the iceberg here in terms of the amount of time. And also, in terms of, and I know this is your interest, it's also ours, community engagement is a big piece of designing a public building. There will be many opportunities. We think there will be more opportunities in this six-month study, but certainly during that 12-month process of design, there are a lot of opportunities for public engagement, public processes like these kinds of meetings, but also community forums like we conducted back in August. Okay, so this project, when we started, we inherited a building program that was completed in 2024. Our first step was to review that program. It's, you know, a couple hundred pages of information about the library, and digest it, and work with the staff and the MBLC to digest it and make any refinements we could that we felt made it more efficient. So we were able to find about 1,500 square feet that we could reduce right off the bat, just based on some math errors, some clarifications in the written program. So that's the baseline for the work that we do. That has informed what is now a little bit under a 24,000-square-foot building, and that's what we've been looking at. So Judy mentioned, this is the larger property, town-owned property. It is combined of two parcels, parcels 50 and 60, with the fields on parcel 50, the MacArthur Building on parcel 60. As has been discussed, we presented options for that parcel 50. As has been discussed, we presented options for that parcel 50, you know, five different options of different configurations for how a library might be located on parcel 50, leave room for a future town common. And actually, we thought worked quite well, sort of engaging a town common, you know, having a kind of reciprocal relationship between those two important things. The Article 97 protections obviously made us rethink this, and so we went back to the site and started giving a closer look to parcel 60. We started by ruling out areas that didn't make sense. The area between MacArthur and the division between parcels 50 and 60, too small to put a building and parking on, not to mention the fact that the open space kind of overlaps that area. So there was some question about the Article 97 protections. We looked behind the MacArthur School Building. There's ample space. It's flat. We could fit a building. We could fit parking. But at the end of the day, it's a public building that's kind of hidden behind an old school, and it's not visible. It's not all that accessible. We felt it marginalizes the library in that location, although there's room to put it there. And so that led us to look at this northeast corner of the property, which, as you may know, is wooded. You probably haven't walked back in there. I have. It's very difficult. But it had some things about it that were appealing to us. One, it's in front of the MacArthur School. Two, it is along Route 28. It has the potential for easy access, for visibility. Those are very important things for a public building, especially a public library. And we think that in that location, it could play well with the MacArthur School Building. A closer look at that site revealed that there's a lot of topography there, and that's probably why it is still wooded. But that depression doesn't take up the entire area. The yellow shaded area is what's dead flat, and then it gently slopes down toward the middle. It's not an aggressive depression, but there is some change in grade.
Can I just ask, so that's not a hill, it's a depression?
It's a depression, yes. It is dry. It was confirmed in the original assessment of this site during the site selection process that there are no wetlands at play here. This is, and I walked down in there. It is dry. So we thought, looking at this, that there's an opportunity here to actually make that into a benefit, a visual amenity, potential advantage for stormwater management, and arrange program around the edges of that depression, again, keeping sort of forward of the MacArthur School Building, having it close to Route 28, allowing for connections from it across sort of laterally to a future town common. And so we started to develop a scheme that did just that. This plan proposes a new 24,000-square-foot building arranged around that topographic feature and really using that as a kind of context that is special. It's you come into the library and you kind of discover this hidden gem from inside the library. That is a real visual amenity, and it's so important for public buildings to create environments that are memorable, that are enjoyable for staff, for patrons, that people want to come back to. But it also needs to have some presence in the town. And so I think having it daylight out to Route 28, I think, is a positive. We didn't think that putting the building fully along 28 was going to be that satisfactory. Route 28 is a busy road. We do think that there should be strong pedestrian connections from Route 28, and I believe, it's hard to tell, but from Google Earth, it looks like there's a crosswalk here. If there isn't, I think it would benefit public use of things south of Route 28 to encourage that ability. And we talked about this in the other site, too, that especially with Town Hall across the road, I think improving those kinds of connections between important public buildings, we think, is really important. There is a sidewalk that comes in the access road here, and it runs along the access road to this point before it turns and then dies out. That could very easily be extended to create an easy pedestrian connection. We also think that vehicular circulation could be improved. There is an existing parking lot here. We think that, I mean, there's plenty of room here. This is also town-owned property, although I don't think we need to go quite that far. But we think that there could be a shared parking lot that serves both the MacArthur School and the library. You know, this is a school that is completely surrounded by asphalt. It's not the best condition for any building, let alone a school. You know, think about, at the end of the day, discharging kids out, you know, and there are cars circling the building. So drop-off and pickup is a challenge. We think that with this project, there's actually a chance even to improve vehicular circulation, maybe a new drop-off, drop-off for the library, a drop-off for the school that's close to this entrance, which is currently the accessible entrance for that building. But also, we think there's a real reciprocity between a school and a public library that we get excited about, and we think that, you know, creating more out of the space between them could be a net positive for both buildings. So we think there's ample room here to do this. To get into the building design a little bit, so we're still early in the process. As I said, we're two months in, and we pivoted pretty hard here to switch our focus to this site. But this is taking that program document that you saw and starting to arrange that into the site diagram that we developed, doing what we call a test fit. So this confirms that the program fits, that the things are generally where they need to be. The three wings are generally broken out as adult wing, children and teen wing, and community wing. So this is meeting rooms, study rooms, all sort of supervised by a central service desk, which monitors entry and has good sightlines of all of those wings. So it functions well as a library. The MBLC has reviewed this. They're comfortable with this direction. So we think that we're heading in the right direction. These next slides are very preliminary. They look polished because they're 3D renderings, but these are super early concept sketches, effectively, that just look a little more photorealistic. So this is an aerial view of the site. This is that building superimposed on that aerial view with the expanded parking. This is the hotel next door. There are a couple of houses here. The edge of the lot is along this tree line, and then the town property goes off the screen up at the top here. There's plenty of room, as I said, for expanded parking. There's good separation, we think, between the MacArthur School and the potential library with the potential for a pedestrian connection along here over to a future town common.
What's across the street? South.
State police barracks.
Yeah, and Town Hall is to the right, sort of off the page. Again, these are concept images. They're not well-developed, but these are intended to give you a kind of general sense of scale, right? So this would be the building as you see it from parking. There's a covered porch that gets you to the entrance, which is here. This is the children's wing that you saw in the plan. This is the community wing, so the main community spaces would be here. Those would be available off hours, so you could still enter through the main door. The rest of the library would be secure, but the community spaces would be accessible, as would the lobby, the bathrooms, the support spaces for those community spaces. This is coming around then to that sort of central area, that kind of wooded depression that I mentioned. This would be a view from that area, looking back towards the library. As you, sorry, as you get to the ends of the wings, the building has an opportunity to kind of project out a little bit over the forest, which we think could actually be quite lovely. So this is the children's wing in the foreground, adult wing in the background. This is not a, there we go. And then a view from Route 28. You're seeing the end of the adult wing here, the children's wing visible kind of through the trees. We think at night, this could be, you know, a really inviting thing, but so visible, but also a little bit protected from Route 28. We think there's an opportunity there that is, that's unique and kind of special to this particular site. So that's, this is where we are. We're hoping to continue. This is where we would pick up from and take this all the way through to the end of December and submit to the MBLC.
Thank you.
My, my, my.
I have one question, one or a couple of questions, but what is the, what is the average square foot for, you said this is 24,000. Is that the average that's being built for other communities in Massachusetts that have a sole individual one? I mean, it seems large to me for a town who's going to also keep, you know, have a Yarmouth port and a West Yarmouth library.
I can't speak to that. I don't know that statistic. I do know that, and I don't know the population of Yarmouth, so I don't know how the size of the kind of combined square footage of the libraries relates to population. The MBLC, I'm sure, has an opinion about that.
We have that information, Madam Chair, and I'm happy, I received it from one of your, the earlier reports, and I think it's in the programmatic study. It's in there. It's in the appendix. I have it right here, and I'm happy to share it with members of the board. I can say, for example, the town of Brewster has one main library, and that library is 23,418 square feet.
What's Brewster's population?
The population, I think it's approximately 16,000 people.
No, that when I was on the library.
Oh, excuse me, no. It's 10,000 people.
Yeah.
On the library planning committee, that was one of the first questions that the MBLC asked and imposed, and how, we have a 60,000 seasonal population, and the 25,000 square feet was what was recommended.
So we build for seasonality?
No, but even at 30, 25,000 square feet is recommended, and to get the grant, that's what they're looking at. That's, they have requirements.
What I'm trying to balance, I guess what, I'm just going to get to the meat and potatoes. I want to see this thing pass. I don't personally see this thing passing at the size and scope that we're looking at and the dollar amount. So I'm just trying to figure out if it's a wish list of what we're hoping or if it's really needed, right? Because that's what I want to look at. People have to understand, and this is no disrespect to any of you, as Mark has pointed out several times, we have a school coming up. We have other items that the voters in this town are going to be asked to look at. So we need to really crunch numbers because we need to, we need to get it passed. I mean, I believe we need a new library, but I don't, I'm not, I don't think something of this magnitude is going to pass. I just don't. So my next question is for, what is the average right now for commercial or municipal square footage? You said 24,000 square foot. What's the build, what's the average price per square foot right now?
For budgeting purposes, we budget $1,000 a square foot now for a municipal building. Pre-COVID, that would have been between $500 and $600 a square foot. We saw unprecedented.
You're talking $24 million?
$24 million construction.
And you're looking at a $10 to $13 million grant?
That's right.
Okay.
That's construction costs, though. So you have to distinguish between hard costs, construction, and soft costs, which are all of the other things that make up the combined project cost. So soft costs would be all the furniture, shelving. Shelving is an eligible cost for the MBLC, and actually, some of the soft costs are eligible, covered by the grant. The grant is not just for construction dollars, it's for project dollars. So the soft costs include design fees, engineering fees, legal permitting, temporary facilities, you know, anything, testing, anything that is not directly related to construction.
Right. It's similar to like the school building authority, right? So they put the plan together, and then they itemize what's reimbursable and what's not reimbursable.
Yeah, and according to the MBLC's formula, about 98% of construction costs are eligible. About 50% of project costs or soft costs are eligible, and that makes up the combined eligible costs, and the grant is based on that figure. You know, the construction cost has to be borne out by an estimate. So at the end of this process, at the end of December, we'll have documents that are sufficiently developed at a kind of pre-schematic level to give to an estimator and get a detailed estimate, at which point we'll have a much better idea of costs. There's a lot of anecdotal, you know, chatter out there about where costs are, and we're constantly talking to contractors and other architects and owners, project managers, about where we see projects coming in. Some are coming in under, some are coming in over. It's very difficult to predict. $1,000 a square foot is what we budget because we think that's kind of a midpoint. We have seen projects come in lower than that on a square-foot basis. We've seen projects come in higher than that. Usually, the greater the square footage, the more economy of scale you have, and that number tends to go down a little because the building is bigger. Smaller projects have a premium associated with them, and so they tend to be higher.
Just in terms of your design, I'm just curious why you took a one-story layout as opposed to less lot coverage and two-story?
A couple of reasons. One, I mean, from a staffing standpoint, a single-story library is easier. Two-story libraries, there's also, I mean, they exist. We've designed them. There are many of them in the state, but they require a choice, who's going to be on the second floor, who's going to be on the first floor. Sometimes that's a hard discussion. You know, children, families with kids don't want to have to take an elevator up to storytime because there's 100 people coming to an event, so that puts them on the ground floor, but then that displaces other programs. So there are programmatic decisions that have to be made, or priorities that have to be made when you split it into multiple levels. The other thing is supervision by staff. It's much easier to manage and supervise a single-story building than it is a two-story building. Public libraries are public buildings. They're open and free to all. Sightlines are important. Security is important. Bad things happen in public buildings, unfortunately, and so you want to minimize the potential for that. And so supervision, visual supervision by staff is a key factor when we're looking at design. There's also the need for separation. You know, you need separation between different programs. You don't want private adult study rooms next to the children's storytime room just because it's distracting, you know, noise concerns, access, it's, you know, people getting from one space to another are disruptive. So generally speaking, the one-story layout allows you to have maximum flexibility in terms of how you accommodate that program and to have it be as successful as it can be. That's not to say that that's always the right case. We happen to have the ability to do a one-story building in terms of the available area. They also don't have stairs. They don't have elevators. They're easier from an egress standpoint. They don't have the added cost of those items. They don't have redundant things on each floor, multiple bathrooms, multiple janitors' closets, electrical rooms. So there's an efficiency to a one-story building. And when, as architects, we measure efficiency by a ratio of the usable square footage to what's called the gross square footage, the total square footage. So total square footage includes bathrooms, mechanical rooms, storage, corridors, wall thicknesses, all of the space that isn't part of the sort of net mission of that institution. The net program is all of the sort of usable program space. The ratio of those two things determines building efficiency from an architect's standpoint. We expect a single-story building to be around 70% efficient. A two-story building typically is less than 65% efficient for the reasons that I mentioned. You have redundant corridors, you have stairs, elevators, all the things that are adding. So that's a long way of responding to your question about single-story. But that's sort of how we arrived where we are.
I just, I am hopeful that the town will take a dual process. I think that this is a better location than what we were looking at before for a variety of reasons. The playground, you know, we've talked about the seaside festival and all the other things that we could accommodate. I agree with the reciprocity with, between the potential for the school. I think that there's a lot of value to have that school there. But I do think that we, as a town, need to present to voters, or at least know what the option of that retrofit is. You know, instead of just a new build, I think we should look at both and give them, you know, have an option to look at.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I just want to thank everybody that's serving on the committee for all the time, energy, and effort that you've spent on this project. It's very much appreciated, and on behalf of everybody here, I want to thank you all. You're doing a great job. I know it's frustrating. I know we've thrown some curveballs at you, and there's some things maybe we would have liked to have figured out ahead of time, like the legal aspects of the commons area and the public land. I get all that. But the reality is... the reality is, is that we've got a terrific team, and I have to say, Matt, I'm a big fan of you and your firm. You've done a wonderful job. Every time we throw a curveball at you, you always come back with something that's really well-done.
Thank you. Architects make great catchers.
Okay, well, the Yankees may need some help. So I just have to get that out there, because as the chair said, we have a huge problem on our hands. We have some major financial challenges, and I think it's important that those of us that serve on the board that are wrestling with these challenges, we need to basically speak on behalf of the people of the community, because we're going to be asking them to spend another $100 million on two phases of wastewater pretty soon. We're going to have to ask them to deal with a new fire station, which could cost $50 million, and then we've got the schools around the corner with another $50 million ticket for a new school, and we have to figure out how we're going to handle that one. So there's a lot of money that we're going to have to wrestle with, a lot of costs, a lot of projects, that we've never had, we've never had to handle this magnitude of financing before. The reality is, we just haven't. We've struggled financially for many, many years, and there are a variety of reasons for it. But we're now, because of strong management of the town with our management team, we've been able to sort of breathe a little bit financially, and now we can tackle some big challenges, and there's a lot of them. So I think we all feel, I know I feel, a very strong obligation to look at all of the potential angles and to see whether or not the MacArthur School, for example, can be retrofitted for this. I think it's an important option. People are going to ask us questions. They're going to want to know, we have all these extra buildings. Why aren't we using them? That's what I hear. And given all the costs, we better at least put the options in front of the voters. As the chair said, our job here is to get the best options for the community and give them enough information so that they can make the right choice. And I honestly think the reuse of the MacArthur, I like what's been said, let's work on the double track. Let's work down that road. We owe the people of the community an idea of what we're getting into financially with that and what the issues are. On the other hand, we'd be crazy not to pursue this other track and look at it. I think what you've done is you've taken a challenging situation, and you've actually created something very, very interesting and something with great promise. That still needs to be worked on and flushed out, but I just think that you're, it's obvious that you're spending all the right time and a lot of creative energy to help us wrestle through how to build a new facility, and I very much appreciate that. I'm taken away, every time I go to a meeting and I hear you present, I'm impressed, and then I never, I think, well, he can't top that. Well, you've topped, you've topped it. So I think you've done a great job, and I feel comfortable with the fact that you and this team are together to help us wrestle through this question and this challenge together, because at some point, we're going to have to figure out how we get through this, what the options are, and give our best set of recommendations to the voters. And I think the direction that you're on with the new build site, the new build option, you know, is a fascinating one, and I appreciate your sensitivity to the environment, your respect for the trees. We love trees in Yarmouth. With the last name Forrest, you know, it tends to, it tends to be part of the political--
If the tree falls in the forest and nobody's there, do you hear it?
I do, I do. No, but I think, what I like is the fact that you've shown great sensitivity to the site. Every time, I saw this before when you were looking at the other options. You saw a site with challenges, but you turned them into opportunities. This area has challenges, but you're looking at ways to make them opportunities. So I think that approach to addressing our situation is incredibly helpful and is important. I'm also glad that we can reassure people that are concerned about the playground and the public land and all that space that we want to protect in this commons project. I'm glad we can reassure people that that's something that they don't have to worry about and that we can move in a different direction. So I think, I think the two, you're coming to us looking for endorsement of the two, the sort of the parallel approach. I think it makes a great deal of sense. I fully support it, and I, like I said, I very much appreciate the way in which you've tackled the new building option. You're looking at the right area and with the, with the right set of issues and challenges to wrestle with and work out. So thank you for that. So I'm all, I'm all in favor of what you've done, and again, impressed with how much you've accomplished in such a compressed timeframe. So thank you.
Well, I'm very impressed with you. Thank you. Like, like Mark, I mean, I've been blown away. When I saw these concepts, what you were able to put together in such a short period of time is really fascinating. Yes, we do have to follow both approaches, because our people in town are going to be asking us to do that. I appreciate so much the hard work of this committee. I know how much time you've put into it. I know how flexible you've had to be, and yet you kind of come through it all five-star. I mean, really fantastic. We, in our process, are going to have to be thinking about not only the potential of retrofitting Lawrence MacArthur as an opportunity, but we shouldn't be forgetting the fact that currently Cape Cod Child Development resides in that location and has put a significant amount of money into that location. And that will, I think as well, be something that's going to be in our deliberations. But I certainly support the idea of let's carry on. We have enough time before Springtown meeting to, to come back with some very well-thought-out and prepared ideas. So thank you.
Joyce?
I had a bureaucratic question before I, before I do my praise dance. And that's, does the MBLC, if we apply for the whole design and building grant that, with the December deadline, and we get that, does the MBLC impose a very strict, you start by this date, you finish by this date deadline?
Oh, great question. I don't know the answer.
My understanding, so just to clarify, you've been awarded the planning and design grant, which is funding the current study. You have also been identified as, as one of the immediate recipients of a construction grant, assuming successful town meeting vote. So it's contingent on that, but, but you are first in line, the town of Yarmouth is first in line, you know, with a couple of other communities, and they divide it into tiers, small tier, medium tier, large tier. There are several other, Town of Hanson is another one of the medium-tier, immediately funded towns. So after they do their review and you show compliance with the requirements of the grant through this study that we're doing now, and provide an estimate, then you go to town meeting, you get approval from the town, the community to move ahead, and they want you to sign a contract that June to start. So to answer your question about timing, you need to make a decision. If you approve it in May, you can't then defer it. You have to use it or lose it. It's my understanding. And so that could start as soon as, as June, and I believe they want you to be under contract by the end of June of 2026. And then, in terms of the, the kind of timing, they, they do time their distributions. They don't give you the lump sum. It's, it's spread out over the course of design and construction.
Right.
And, and there's a formula for that, and I'm not totally up to speed on that. But there is an expectation about time, but they also work with you to develop a schedule, and they tie their funding to your project schedule. So, you know, if there's a complicated permit process, and you think it's going to take, this town, it's going to take 20 months instead of 18, or it's, we think we can do it in 16 months of construction, I think they will work with you. But that's, they've got a model for how that distribution works.
So there'd be much more pressure about the start date than the completion date?
I believe so, yes. I, I mean, I think there is pressure about the completion date, but that pressure is going to exist anyway from the town. The town doesn't want a project--
Yeah, you don't want it to go on.
You got that right.
Well, that said, I think it's an extraordinary, beautiful thing to have on, have proposed and have on Route 28. I mean, I picture it just making that whole section of Route 28 and potentially attracting, you know, residents and businesses to locate to Yarmouth. I love that it's on the main street and on the bus line, so it seems like it's going to be a great location for people to get to. I love the way you've figured in, you know, the recreation space and the parking space and the shared parking potentially with MacArthur. It just seems like it's such a well-thought-through plan. I really admire it, and I just love the way, you just keep getting better and better. I mean, we've just got to give you lots of credit for that. So thank you for all you've done. Everybody who's on the committee, everybody who used to be on earlier versions of Library Planning Committee. It's great that this many people have put so much work into it. We're really grateful.
Thank you.
So I wanted to kind of summarize from my own brain. The renovation or rehabilitation of the existing MacArthur Building, according to the, the review, will likely be close to, if not equal to, the cost of new construction, and if we didn't go for the December deadline, we'd forfeit the grant money. So the plan is to do an assessment while we go forward for the grant money. What's the, the next assessment going to cost? Was it 40, 45?
Well, just, can we just--
Mm-hmm, back me up.
Okay. So that, oh, the, the construction costs may be comparable to the new build, but there is no money available?
Right.
Okay, so just--
Or if we don't, that's important, Judy. I hear you.
And all the work that we've done so far on this project then won't apply to the other?
Right.
So all that visualizing and everything would start again without--
But there is a plan to do the assessment in this--
Well, that's what we need your direction from tonight.
That's sort of where I'm questioning.
Okay.
And did we have a price tag on that?
We, we have a rough idea of what an estimate like that would cost, because we've done them before. So we did one last year, that assessment, for a building that is a smaller building, but, but it involved the same group of consultants, the same kind of amount of time to visit the site, make an assessment, write up a report. That was about a $50,000 effort. That does not include any architectural studies of, you know, how would a library, how, how could you turn this building into a library?
That's just for building--
It's just building performance, conditions assessment is what we call it. So you're looking at the, the structure we've looked at, you're looking at the exterior envelope, you know, the roof, the walls, windows, mechanical systems, civil engineering, utilities, all of the things that go into making a building. We have to go back and look, what, what kind of shape is this in? How much money would we have to spend to make it into something else?
But it seems like we might need to do that at any rate.
Do the assessment?
Not for the library perhaps, but in general. The MacArthur Building sounds like in, it's, needs that kind of capital improvement assessment. Is it on the list for anything?
No, it does, it, it does not. It's currently leased, it's so--
That's because of the tenancy.
And so the town does not need to do that network. But, but I would say, I, I think it'd probably be a wise thing to discuss in a little bit more detail what the scope that we need in order to compare these things. And I would say, for example, if there is a full and adequate assessment of the building, its envelope, its structure, such that we're able to really hone in on some of the square foot costs, that would provide, I think, a real legitimate basis for comparing the two projects, short of doing the full design development of the spaces, adjacencies, that type of work, I, I think, you know, you don't, you don't need to do. So I, I think to bring to life the concept that we're talking about now, you know, maybe we'll, we'll have to kind of work out a scope that would enable that building envelope assessment to be done, just for comparative purposes. And I, I think the budget that we're hearing, it is a lot of money, but not in the scheme of making a decision--
Right.
You know, on a permanent new structure like that. So I think that if we don't have to go all the way through design development, we may find a real sweet spot on developing the data that people need to make this decision.
Bob, just one clarification. The, so the conditions assessment is understanding the existing conditions and how you would have to modify existing conditions, what the cost would be to bring it up to current standards, assuming a change of use to library occupancy. That's only part of the puzzle, though. The, the architectural assessment, I think, is an important component if you are going to analyze cost and have a comparison between that as a viable option and a new building as a viable option.
Well, that's a good point.
You have to go through the architectural study as well to understand, you know, it's one thing to talk about it as a library, but you, you have to try to take the program that we have and fit it into that existing container. What does that mean? What does that obligate us to do to that building? What modifications do we have to do in order to make that work? And so the condition is one piece of it, and the architectural planning study is another piece. It doesn't have to go as far as this study will. This study, because of the state requirements, obligates you to what they call the MPLCP level of design, Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program level of design. It's, it's, it's their own, it's the state's own kind of level. It's, it falls short of a schematic design package, which, you know, as, as design professionals, schematic design, design development, construction documents are kind of the three phases that we go through, and those are milestones that we estimate. This falls a little bit short of that early schematic package, but it's detailed enough that you can get an estimate. I think we would need to carry a planning study not that far, but far enough that we understand the implications of accommodating this program in that building. So it's not, it can't, I don't think that it's going to serve you well to only do the assessment. The assessment is an important piece. It'll give you invaluable information moving forward, regardless of, you know, what, what that building means for this project. But I think for this project, you have to do the architectural piece, and, and we'll have to think about what that is. We should talk about the scope of that. And, and I should also mention, the $50,000, that's from another library in another community, different sized building. We need to solicit proposals from our consultant team. I think we should be able to do it in that range, but we have to actually get proposals and scope that we can review with you to make sure that, that we're getting everything we need out of them.
And now we're looking at more like $200,000.
I don't think it'll be that much. I mean, this, this study, I actually don't remember how much this study is, 175 maybe for this study, but I don't think it'll be that. It could be 100. I mean, it could be 50 for the assessment and another 50. It might be less than that. It depends a little bit on the scope and the amount of time.
Okay. Thank you, though. That's very helpful. And I had one other comment before I yield. And when you're, and no, these are, the ink is still wet.
Yes.
When we are doing our renderings of Route 28, since the DOT will be making monster, hopefully wonderful changes to Route 28, if we can incorporate that so that you have the sidewalks and the setbacks more, their buffer, their bike lanes, all that, because I think that will influence what that wing looks like presented to Route 28. I don't think it'll be quite as woodsy as we might think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I had a question that I guess is for Bob about this, and it's about the tenancy. Now, there was the Bridgewater State lease, and then Cape Cod Collaborative is subleasing from them. They've obviously put in several million in, I guess what we call capital improvements. Are they're also taking care of maintenance and utilities while they're there?
Correct.
I mean, how long does their lease go? Because I'm sensitive to the point raised by Dorcas, that, that they really need the site also. So that I would be reluctant to, to evict them after they've put in capital improvements.
There's, there's no, I don't think there's any, Madam Chair, if I can just clarify something. I don't think anybody's anticipating evicting them. I think it's a question of they're, the lease coming up. The lease was sold to the town as a university campus. All right? And then when Bridgewater had difficulty finding a way to follow through on their commitments, they, they went out and found a tenant and then convinced us that that arrangement with the collaborative made sense, and then sold that to us. collaborative made sense and then sold that to us. So, that lease is, my understanding runs out at the end of the decade. And I think, you know, I think our problem in Yarmouth is we have lots of buildings, and we're struggling with how to put them to use. And I get asked this question, I think, I'm sure others do, about what are we doing with all of our buildings? We should be either unloading them, auctioning them off, or putting them to good municipal use. And I think it makes sense to, you know, have a study, but we didn't make a long-term permanent commitment to Bridgewater and their sub-tenants for the facilities, yes. And I think, quite frankly, it's been very disappointing that they basically bailed on us because I think we had a lot of hope that, you know, we'd have a university campus here, like they have in so many other suburban communities. But we're getting off topic here. I think, my hope is that we can come up, you can come up with a legitimate budget and scope of work that we can review later that helps us do a proper assessment of the MacArthur School. Because my hope is that when we revisit this again with folks, we'll have a better idea of what that's going to cost and when that's likely to be done. Because I think that is going to continue to be part of the conversation. So, I don't think it makes sense for us to wait on that. I think we need to come to some conclusion on that quickly.
So, Mark, do we feel then that the assessment of MacArthur is worth doing just for its own sake, because it's a town building, even separate from the whole question of the library and a separate building?
Well, from speaking as just, this is one selectman here, but, or a select board member, that lease is coming up. You know, we have to build another school, right? So, where's that going to go, right? That's a $50 million project. Guess what? We might learn something from this study that suggests that, you know what, it'll be a perfect place for a new school. I see the superintendent's still here.
Change of use.
So, yeah, it may be a perfect school that solves a school problem that we have.
With renovation or with rehabilitation?
Well, what we could do is, I would recommend, since you've appointed me to serve on the Marguerite Small School Replacement Committee, I would suggest that we take that information. Should there be a decision not to pursue the library at this particular site, then when we get to that point, use that information as part of the feasibility study and analysis of a school there, along with other things that we're going to have to look at. So, again, I don't want to, you know, I'm glad the superintendent's here to listen how we're, you know, how challenged we are, but the reality is, I don't see any of this money being a wasted investment. That's our building. The lease comes up at a certain point. We should make a decision on what the best use is for that building in the future that serves the people of Yarmouth. If it turns out that, you know what, we can't do a library there, but it might make a damn good school again, then you know what?
Right.
Let's present that, let's take that up and deliberate on that at the appropriate time.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I guess I'll just close out by saying I support the plan, and I look forward to your getting, meeting the December deadline.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
No pressure.
Anybody have anything else?
Thank you all very much.
So, before we leave, we need some direction from you. Because we were, as part of our outreach, and this group is very committed to community involvement, we're going to be at Seaside, and we'll be distributing those brochures that you have. Comment on the brochures are that they're limited publication runs because we want to keep them up to date. So, as information changes, those are kind of going to be updated. The QR codes on the back will lead you to correct information and the most current information. So, that's what we're going to be doing this weekend. We do have this room reserved next week for another listening session, but I heard in the wind that you may want to be doing another hearing here within the context of a select board. So, I-
We don't have anything at this point to present to them. That's the-
No, I think, yeah, Madam Chair, I know I've been the one sort of insisting on a public hearing, but obviously, this whole project has morphed and changed. And I think it would be very helpful if you use the form for your own forum to educate people on where things stand and get input, further input from the public. I don't think there's a necessity for us to partner with you and do some big public hearing together.
At this point?
At this point, Madam Chair.
The only thing, if I could, is that proposing a week from now for the public hearing, I don't think is giving you the lead time that you need with the public. So, you'd have to be pushing it out to a different date.
So, we'll have to just work on availability and what's happening here. I did want to go back to Tracy's question about how large the library was, and wasn't based totally on population, but it was that study that was done by Disruptive Construction? Is that their name?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, they're the ones who did the public meetings and questionnaires. You may know more about that than I do.
Yes, that was the right firm. They did it.
Okay. So, that's where that number came from, as a starting point. And then, as Matt talked, it did get squeezed in a little bit. So, population is one factor, but it wasn't the only one.
And what do you need from us, Judy? I mean, I think you got a sense, you got a sense of what everybody is, I think, on track for the dual parallel moving forward?
Yes. So, that was it, and I didn't know about the public hearing, and we will delay any other, because we're in Bellfield in the community this weekend. So, we'll put off another kind of listening session. So, that was all we needed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to let the community know that these are not just available at the Seaside Festival. They are available at both libraries and here at Town Hall. And to show that we've been listening to the community, I've seen a number of questions and Facebook posts.
Can you go to the microphone if you're going to speak, so people at home can hear you?
Yes.
And identify yourself, please.
Hello. I'm Mindy Harrington, Youth Services Librarian, and I just wanted to point out that this trifold that we have created that will evolve is found also at both libraries and Town Hall. And to further enforce that, we are listening to comments, this first round of this trifold does address the questions of how much our programs have grown in the last several years and addresses a question like, we had a question of how many computers are actually used at the library. As you can see on this trifold, you can see the growth that we've had in the last three years for public computer use. So, hopefully, that answers some of our community's questions during the first round of this.
Excellent. Thank you, Mindy. Thank you all very much.
You all.
It's an extraordinary vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a vote to approve Old Kings Highway election meeting warrant. All right, in our packet, we have a memo from Mary Maslowsky, who's here and prepared to speak on this. And on the third page of the packet, information is a proposed motion that the board can consider.
Again, Mary Maslowsky, Town Clerk. This is our standard annual request for the board to issue a warrant for the Old Kings Highway Annual Meeting and Annual Town, Old Kings Highway Election. We are recommending that the date be scheduled for Monday, November 24th, and that it be held here from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Hearing Room. We have had much luck since we've moved it here. It's better accessibility for everyone. And for those people that are unfamiliar, anyone who lives in Yarmouth north of Route 6 is considered a part of the Old Kings Highway District. So, those persons are all eligible to register to vote and to participate in the annual meeting and the annual election. As most of you know, we replace one member of the Yarmouth Annual, the Yarmouth Old Kings Highway Committee on an annual basis.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary. Does anybody have any questions for Mary about vote? Is anybody prepared to read the motion?
I don't have it.
I think there are two motions attached.
I hereby move that the Select Board adopt the warrant for the November 24th, 2025 Old Kings Highway Annual Meeting and Election, and direct the Town Clerk to have said warrant duly advertised and posted in accordance with the Charter and Bylaws of the Town of Yarmouth and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I further move that the Select Board set the date and time of Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 4:30 to be the deadline for candidate to obtain nomination paper from the Town Clerk's office, and Thursday, November 20th, 2025, at 4:30 p.m. as a deadline for candidates to return nomination papers to the Town Clerk's office for certification to be included on the Old Kings Highway Annual Meeting ballot.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Is there anything else you need from us, Mary?
Nothing else on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our budget policy. Bob?
We have the draft Select Board Budget Policy Statement in front of you this evening, and I would point out firstly, the 2027 budget schedule is accompanying that material. And the key starting factor is that we hope to issue the budget materials to department heads on October 10th. So, that's by the end of this week, departments will be working on the budgets. They'll have those into me by 11:07. And the draft policy statement incorporates the guidelines that the Select Board establishes before we start the budget. And some of the highlights of that is to ensure that the Select Board goals, financial policies are adopted by the board. It covers education, increases to have amounts reserved within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. It ensures that all of the wage increases, overhead items such as utilities, pension health, shall all be fully funded in the budget. It addresses the issue of retiree health insurance and making contributions to the other post-employment benefits, that OPEB liability that we have. It addresses using recurring revenues and free cash to support the capital spending, to maintain road maintenance spending within the property tax, to conserve a portion of free cash for future spending needs, and to also make sure that we set aside recurring funding sources for future capital needs, as well as smoothing out the startup of the debt service for the wastewater. And any new staff positions have to be fully funded with secure, recurring, and sustainable funding sources. And taken together, these policies are, you know, sort of a bumper guard, you know, they protect the town in the budget process to ensure that we have a sustainable, fully funded budget for fiscal year 2027.
Does anybody have any questions on the budget policy? Is there anything really that deviates from previous years?
No. We've kept it on, we've had, you know, it's evolved a little bit over the years to meet the current needs, such as the smoothing of the wastewater. But the key thing is to keep it within the town's financial policies and to make sure that it's sustainable. It doesn't set us on a course that we're going to require, you know, future cuts.
There was a bit of a attention to free cash as well. And there was a policy, there were some notes that I was going to bring forward later about discussions from last year about some changes, and I don't know that this is the right time. So, town bylaw allowing intra-budget transfers with appropriate approvals, reducing the need for special town meetings.
That we have.
Okay, so that's, but I don't want to keep this, this is not the right time. I'll do it in comments or-
That'll be great.
Okay.
Anybody else, any questions on the policy budget?
Madam Chair, I vote, I move that we approve the budget policy as presented tonight.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Thank you for your work on that, Bob.
Well done, Bob.
And I'm happy to see that you're getting an early start. I know it's a little bit abnormal, but hopefully, it will position us better.
Thanks to Jennifer Mullen, our finance director, for cracking the whip on it. I really feel like we're fully engaged on the budget already.
For everybody's knowledge, the next on the agenda is our input on the Chapter 40B proposal, the Zoning Board of Appeals. There's a draft letter to Sean Igoe from the Board of Appeals in our packet that outlines our concerns based on commentary that has already been discussed. I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to read it and make sure that it hits all of the points. I think Bob did a great job drafting it.
I think it does. Madam Chair, I move to approve the letter in, on the Chapter 40B proposal that was presented to us this evening by the Town Administrator.
Second.
Any discussion on the letter?
I have a little bit of discussion. I think, I approve the letter. I don't want to hold us up, but I've looked much deeper into this project, and I probably should have done it before, but I see some efforts at it being an admirable project from the green energy viewpoint and the sustainability viewpoint. I happen to know the firm, and that is what they specialize in. But I do, when I look at the design, I can't abide it. So, that's where the, for me, there's a real problem here. So-
Twenty-seven units on an acre is-
Right. Well, and it's interesting, because I've even got a page here that says 23 rental units. So, they, one of the issues has been that they, they've got multiple proposals in the wind, and even what was, what I looked at today has typos and differences that, who knows what they're really proposing.
May I make one comment, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
When I look at these plans, to me, it was like looking at a size 10-foot being squeezed into a size 6 shoe.
Blisters to follow.
We got a motion on the floor, Madam Chair.
A motion, a second. Any more discussion on the letter?
No, thanks. Enthusiastically support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I unanimously vote to send that letter. Next up, we have a review of our special town meeting articles.
If you'd like, I could quickly go through what the articles are and see if there's any questions.
Yes, sir.
I would start this, it's a short town meeting. There's 14 articles. Article 1, interesting, we just talked about it with the budget policy. It's our OPEB transfer, and those are the other post-employment benefits. There's an unfunded liability for future retiree healthcare costs that we are working, and we're actually doing quite well on retiring that, and this keeps us on target. So, it's a $500,000 transfer toward that trust fund from free cash. Article 2-
So, this is, we're paying as we go, full, in full, correct?
We pay in full for the actual retiree-
Right. And a piece towards-
Piece towards the unfunded liability.
That hasn't changed. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I was also going to ask, what is our free cash balance at this time?
I don't have it exactly. We have applied for a recertification of the free cash, so it's kind of in flux right now. It, you know, should be more, you know, in the $7 million range if it's consistent with, you know, what the initial estimates are.
Thank you.
But I don't want to quote that number-
Understood.
Because the Department of Revenue goes through a litany of calculations to determine that-
We want to deprive them of that.
And Article 2 is refunding of $100,000 towards the analysis of the PFAS groundwater contamination, and that's the environmental contamination, not specifically related to the water supply, but the continued strong participation in the studies ongoing for the point source pollution emanating from areas such as the Barnstable County Fire Training Academy, as well as the Gateway Airport.
Did we ever get a response to our letter at all?
There is a detailed process. They didn't respond to us directly, but there has been a tremendous amount of activity, and they're actually installing at this point a permeable reactive carbon barrier that's designed to initiate some of the first-level treatment at the facility. So, they've obviously heard us on some of that.
That's good news. Is $100,000 going to keep us, give us enough to-
It is. I estimate a little bit more than we'll need for the upcoming year. I researched this, and we have sort of a detailed scope from our consultants that is involved with monitoring that work and also the things like we've done, the shellfish testing, and we're moving forward on a number of areas. And so, this will take us through to next year, and, you know, we'll have to go kind of on a year-by-year analysis to determine what levels of investment. But we do have a scope and a lot of work that I think that this will be, put us in a much better position to understand some of these issues. So, that's Article 2. And then, Article 3 gets into the P5- And then Article three gets into the PFAS for the water treatment under wells ten and eleven, and this helps us speed up the, the process. And I want to point out that both of these two articles for the PFAS are being funded directly from the litigation funds that we've received as part of the proceeds from the class-action lawsuit on PFAS contamination, which the town has received over a million dollars to date. And this additional design funds, we have applied for the SRF funding to do the design, and, and what this does is it jumpstarts that effort, because the SRF funds don't kick until two thousand and twenty-six, and so this way we'll be a little bit ahead of the design for...
This is the same type of treatment program that we did on five and six?
Correct.
Okay.
And that is Article three. Article four is to refund the airport consultant project in the amount of seventy-five thousand, and this is a particularly important time for this, because we've recently, after all of the efforts we've put in, received the approval from the airport that they're putting together some listening sessions with the FAA to have a roundtable to develop the specific standard instrument departure system that we've advocated very strongly for, and this was a recommendation developed by our consultant that has identified that over ninety percent of the flights are instrument takeoffs from the airport, and that we could work jointly with the airport as a win-win situation to institute this automated departure system, which sends the flight path away from the more heavily-developed areas of our community, which are directly abutting the airport.
That's great to hear, but when the manager was here the last time, she told us she couldn't force a pilot to fly any particular way. Do you remember that?
I sure do, and, and I want to point out that there's a new manager who has, you know, more experience in the, you know, the air traffic control end of things, and, and I want to tell you is that, that's why it's so important that we have this consultant, because we learned that that's not true, that, you know, they're quoting these regulations that, that say in an, in an emergency situation, right, the pilot gets to make evasive actions, and no one can tell them that they can't do that. Well, sure, everyone knows that's true, but with over ninety percent of the flights on standard instrument departure, it's all programmed in, and they will comply with it. So the idea that you can't tell somebody what to do, that, you know, is the most fallacious argument I've ever heard.
Good. Mark?
Madam Chair, I, I think it might be helpful or beneficial for us to talk a little bit about maybe adding some language to this particular article to get Town Meeting on board with us actually presenting recommendations to abate noise at the airport within a period of time, so that we raise the funds to provide consulting services, but that, you know...
I don't follow, I'm sorry.
I guess what I'm saying is...
Mitigating impacts, yeah, that's not enough.
Yeah. What's that?
It says mitigating impacts.
No, it's, what we're doing is we're paying for a study. I think, I think to some degree residents want to see us do something, all right?
Well, it says that in the explanation too. At least it mentions the...
Then maybe in the explanation, we, we're very clear that we have a plan to present recommendations on noise abatement having adverse effects on Yarmouth residents by such-and-such-a-date.
Read that last sentence for a sec. It's a really good sentence.
It's a really good sentence.
I mean, it says exactly what you're saying.
Write it, Bob.
All I'm saying, all I'm saying, all I'm suggesting is let's give the voters a timeframe, that we want to get this work done by such-and-such-a-date so that we can present those recommendations. I, I don't think people are going to be thrilled with endless studies, but we have a plan to actually present...
It's not a study, it's a consultant that's working for, I mean, we would like it to be done today, but...
Yeah, exactly.
We're asking them...
Let's put a date in there.
We can give a date, though, because we don't know what's going to be...
Sure, we can.
You don't know what they're going to agree to.
Sure, we can.
Well, well, I think it's arbitrary. You can say we're going to have noise abatement by a certain date, but...
No, I'm not suggesting that we have, we should make a request, a formal request, to the Airport Commission by such-and-such-a-date, that these...
Didn't we already do that? Didn't we already make the request, Bob?
Yes, we did. We requested it multiple times, and, and it's been a real chore. Maybe we could work in there that we'd like to work to design and implement this system within the next year.
There you go. Bingo, within the next twelve months. Bingo.
And, and, you know, at least if we're starting to design it, that's the most important thing.
Yeah, I honestly, you know, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but, you know, we're studying something. Let's, let's get, let's let people know that, you know what, we're going to not stop studying, and we're actually push for some noise abatement recommendations by a certain date.
Wish we had done it last year.
Yeah, exactly. It's sort of, this thing drags on and on and on. I'm sick and tired of talking about noise complaints at the Barnstable Gateway Airport. I really am. Let's, let's stick them a set of recommendations, and then let's be calling for meetings and writing cranky letters and urging them to get on board with us.
I have a comment about it, Bob. Should it say that this is a refund to see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer to provide a refunding for the consulting services?
No, it's, the article is just an appropriation. If we could, in the explanation, you can talk about that it's additional funds refunding within a year, all of that, all of the gory...
To continue, continue our quest.
Mm-hmm. I just think people should know, well, I mean, people who are new to Town Meeting are not going to know that this is coming back and coming back and coming back.
Well, that's, that's, that's the frustration, that's the frustration I'm trying to address, is we have, I mean, we're going to have a constituency here at Town Meeting that's going to be saying, how, how long are we going to keep studying this? So I do think it's important incumbent on us to be clear on our expectation of literally presenting something for adoption within a period of time.
Okay.
Because if I, if I was a, a resident, I mean, I can think of all the neighborhoods where people have been complaining for, about noise, right?
Yes, since I can remember.
Yeah, they're going to say, how long are we going to keep studying this? When are we going to, you know, fish or cut bait on this thing?
Well, I think people have to realize that we're doing the best that we can in, in negotiating and trying to, you know...
I don't want to spend all night at Town Meeting having to defend why nothing has happened, all right? Or I shouldn't say, very little has come of our efforts. I'd like to at least provide some assurance that, you know, some kind of plan will be presented for consideration at a certain point in time. I know we had some, we've had, you know, I think one of the reasons why we're continuing to do this is we, the discussions that have gone on with the prior regime at the airport have been somewhat productive. We have a consultant that we have a great deal of confidence in, so I'm hopeful that this will lead to something, but again, I think it would be helpful in the explanation to make it clear that we're going to be pressing to submit something by a certain point in time, and then after that, pressing for them to adopt the noise abatement measures. So...
Okay, we all set with Article four?
Is that okay, Bob?
Yeah, no, that's fine. We get that. Good idea. Article five is the elementary school feasibility study, and that's in the amount of one million five hundred thousand.
Is any of this reimbursable or not?
Yes, it is.
It says it here.
Hundred percent?
Well, our reimbursement rate is fifty-seven percent.
Okay.
So fifty-seven percent of these funds will be reimbursed directly back to the town.
Why did it go up so much from the last time? I think last time it was like eight seventy-five, so, um, one-point-five-million dollars for feasibility, and that, you get nothing for that other than options. That's a lot of money. I know Dr. Smith's chopping at the bit.
Yeah, well, he hung around.
It's a lot of money.
Good evening. Mark Smith, Superintendent D.Y. So what we did to come up with the number is we, MSBA gives you a bunch of recent data, and the library presentation, you know, confirmed, costs have gone up a lot in recent times. So we looked at, MSBA gave us costs for elementary schools for the last, well, they gave us all the way back to two thousand and fourteen, but, so then we looked at projects going back for the last, through two thousand and twenty-three through up till, they had most recent data was up through twenty-four, like, projects that are in the pipeline, and so projects range, there's one that's very, that's an outlier piece of data, and I've actually contacted that school district, and they're actually paying more money now because their feasibility study was less expensive, and they didn't do, like, testing of the environment, et cetera, but every other project was between one-point-one and one-point-one, one-point-five-one million. So we feel like we're right in the ballpark for what all other districts are paying.
When do you, when do you actually bid a feasibility? So will you have hard numbers prior to, to Town Meeting?
So, no, we have to, we have to get Town Meeting to approve the funding in order to get through the, the phase that we're in now. So we're in the eligibility period. We had a whole bunch of things that we had to accomplish. This is really the last one. The rest was a bunch of data pieces around enrollment. We had to talk about some of our initial ideas for what, like, very loose ideas for what a design might be. We had to answer a bunch of questions for MSBA. There's been like a bunch of timeline things that we had to submit to MSBA. We had to form a building committee. That was one of the things that had to be done as part of the eligibility period. And then this is the last big piece during the eligibility period, is the town has to approve the funding for the feasibility study. It all has to be done by December twenty-sixth, I think is the date, if I have off the top of my head. I can go look it up, but, and then at that time, then MSBA will invite you into the next phase, which is feasibility. So when you have the funding in place, and they invite you into the next phase, and then you start the feasibility phase, which includes securing an OPM, doing the feasibility phase, which is the OPM and a designer, and then getting through up to schematic design.
Okay. I see that Bob has this coming through free cash, which I think is going to help you. I don't think that happened last time. I think we had to go borrow the money to get it done.
This will, this will help us avoid, a, a lot of the borrowing costs have risen up and...
Just so much money.
But we will get hopefully fifty-seven percent of it back, and that will go right back to free cash, so...
Yeah, that's our base rate right now, is fifty-seven-point-one-one percent.
What was it at the intermediate school?
It ultimately ended up being fifty-eight-point-something-three-three, I think. Again, I could go look it up.
That's all right.
But I, when there'll be other opportunities for us to, other incentive opportunities for us, again, some of the conversations around, like, lead gold, if there are other parts, points in the design where we'll be able to potentially increase that percentage, you know, not, you know, we're not going to get to like sixty-five or seventy, but there'll be some other opportunities for us to increase the reimbursement rate by a couple of percentage points, or up to a couple of percentage points.
Okay.
But our base rate is fifty-seven-point-one-one.
I just wondered then if the, the last sentence, these funds are eligible for MSBA reimbursement, should it be at fifty-seven percent?
No.
No.
Because we may, because we may get more.
Pardon? You might get more?
Yep.
But you won't get a hundred percent, is what you're saying.
No.
Correct.
Are you saying there's...
Should it say then partial reimbursement?
And I'm happy to answer those questions on Town Meeting floor if somebody wants to ask the...
It'll probably get asked. Okay.
Is that it for feasibility?
Mm-hmm.
Article six...
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. Is the repealing of the plastic reduction bylaw, and the Board of Health has approved unanimously the new regulations, so they're going to start the public outreach on that. Article seven is to amend the bylaw for the guide for Town Meeting, which is the book Town Meeting Time, to reflect the most recent edition. There's a new edition out, and bylaws reflect the old edition, so...
Oh, my God.
This, this will be a...
Oh, skee.
Where'd this come from? Was this from Town Council?
This came from, no, our town moderator.
Moderator?
Oh, okay, okay.
So what's the addition now? It just says the most recent edition.
Most recent edition, because there may be in the future yet another edition.
Yeah, yeah, another twenty years.
And then Article eight is the golf capital expenses, that they're a little bit different than a lot of the departments, because they need to get a lot of this stuff done over the winter, so that they're not doing it during the season.
What are they doing to the driving range, Bob? Fifty grand?
Are these even real numbers? What, are these real numbers, Bob, or are they just numbers that somebody picked?
No, those are the, those are the real numbers.
I haven't seen a bathroom renovation on a municipal prevailing wage project that that number in, oh, many years.
You think it's high or low?
No, I think it's low, yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot of money to renovate a bathroom these days.
It really does. Do you remember how much we paid for the, oh, God, don't get me started. And then we put porta-potties outside. We built, we built bathrooms at, at, at Old Townhouse Park, and they're locked. We got porta-potties outside, so go figure.
Yeah, I don't even think the, I don't even think, I don't think the Senior Center has the bathrooms done yet.
They don't have a fund, that's why, unfortunately.
And I can send out the project sheets. I've got a project sheet on each one of these. I don't know exactly what they're doing.
That'd be great. I just wonder if they're, if they're actual...
The cart barn is design funds on, on that one. That's a bigger project.
It should say the design.
Yeah, then just say cart barn design.
Renovation might be a design, too.
All right.
And I see that in the explanation, the total for these improvements is four hundred thousand, but the sum is three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Whoops.
It's an error.
Good catch. That will have a lot of people standing up over that one.
Yeah.
Fifty-two, fifty-three, they add up to three.
Typo, it should be three hundred. Good catch on that.
Fifty-two, fifty... Wait a minute, that would have been something.
That's the golf. And then Article nine is the fire department capital expense and...
So the bottom, the explanation gets changed on that one.
In the typo.
In the explanation.
On, are you back on eight or...
Yes, I'm on eight.
Uh-huh.
Goes from three.
Right, the, there's one typo, the four hundred thousand, and then also they're working on what the, the final retained earnings are as of two thousand and twenty-five. So that's marked, you'll see an update on that. And then Article nine is fire department capital expense, and they're putting the ambulance in now in the fall, because there's a three-year lead time on, on an ambulance.
Should we have the ambulance fund on there as well?
It says it at the bottom, in the explanation.
It doesn't give us the total that's in there. Retained...
In the explanation, yeah, what's the total amount? Could, could we put that in there, Bob?
Sure.
What do we have in, in the ambulance fund?
I think that number needs to, I would agree with you, it needs to be in there.
If it's in the others, it should.
It'll get asked, so I might as well just put it in.
Add the balance.
And then Article ten is the open space acquisition out at Taylor Bray Farm, Kingsway, and that is a combination with the community preservation.
Will we, I know in the past we've had, oh, no, about what's in free cash is part of the explanation. Are we going to do that, do you think, at all in this?
We may not have it by the time this is published, but we'll have the free cash by the time the town, the meeting comes.
We can at least report it.
Yes.
Should it say anything about no taxpayer dollars will be required? Well, I guess you can if it's free cash, because that is taxpayer dollars to some degree.
This is all taxpayer.
Yeah, never mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's best usually just saying exactly where the money's coming from, and... So that's Article ten, but there is also, I don't know if we'll hear by the time we get to Town Meeting, there's a major grant application in on this that could fund most of the town's share on it.
Can I just, can I just ask about Town Meeting time? Does that change any of the, the two-thirds requirements or anything like that?
Oh, it's fairly parliamentary.
Okay.
How you deal with motions and things like that. It's good in case you get into an argument.
It's like Robert's Rules of Water for Town Meeting.
For Town Meeting, yeah.
It's making sure it's not changing any of the...
No, no.
Substance, because I know the zoning got changed, but in the state.
Right, those, those are a matter of state law. They would not be in the Town Meeting time.
Good.
And Article eleven is a revision of the, the dog bylaw, that, that changes, there, there was, Town Clerk's Office has worked, I think, for the last year and a half on, on this, that there's, there's a lot of cleanup items, but the primary issues were the regulations covering the kennels, how the kennels are approved, how they're managed, and, and I think it's a vast upgrade.
Has this been to the Board of Health? Because that's in their purview. Mary? Mary? Hi.
Good evening. So, no, this doesn't affect the Board of Health. This only affects the, the dog provisions, and it's based on state enacted, something called Ollie's Law last year, which now require, changed some count provisions, requires us to now do an annual filing with them. So, there are three major changes in here. One, I'm hoping we change the licensing period from July 1st to a calendar year end, which will allow us to capture those applications as a part of the census. So, a dog application will go out together with a sticker application and the census in January, so that we can kind of capture that as, as a three-in-one mailing. In addition to that, we always had a multi-pet provision and definition in our bylaw. That was essentially our equivalent of a personal kennel. The state law now allows five or more dogs, so it didn't make sense to have a multi-pet permit and a personal kennel, which provision, which is different in the state law, so...
So, does the Board of Health regulations regulate...
Doesn't, this doesn't affect, this doesn't affect Board of Health at all. Natural Resources is the, is in charge of dogs. So, this doesn't, these changes don't affect anything with the Board of Health. It's really the Natural Resources Office that goes out and does the inspections for dogs. So, it's not, it's not really, these changes are only affecting the dog provisions to make it tailored to the, the changes from Ollie's Law.
So, the, other than what's in red is already...
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And did you look at any other towns?
So, frankly, the majority of towns have a licensing period of January to December. It's unusual to be a fiscal year in that. And really, this was enacted and effective in September of last year, so most towns are still in the situation wherein is trying to tailor them to, to the new state law. So, town council was on the phone with the Attorney General's Office and the Department of Agriculture, as late as yesterday, trying to confirm one of the provisions. So, a lot of it is new, and the implementation is new with respect to, to the kenneling registry with the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture.
We have a chance to, this is a lot. I don't think we want to get into it right now, but will we have a chance to really discuss this?
The changes?
Well, I mean, it's not, all this is in red, is, is new.
I looked at it, though, and it's very, housekeeping.
99% of it is housekeeping. It is to correct provisions so that we now comply with the state statute, which was put in, which was enacted, like I said, last fall. This was the first year we had to actually register and file a notification with Department of Agriculture on kennels.
Chairman's right that we, we need to figure out a way to provide proper notice and, and maybe have a hearing or a meeting, some discussion of it where folks can be notified.
So, we were, we were hopeful to get this on annual town meeting in the spring, and we did not have an opportunity to do that, so unfortunately.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure.
No, no, it's fine. I mean, it's here. We can, we can have it on the thing, but I think that we maybe should carve out some time before the town meeting to at least kind of go through, because this is...
No, happy to. I understand it. I understand it's tight.
So, if we can do some of it and get the questions in advance at a meeting.
Absolutely. It's tight, unfortunately. When I reached back out to town council, the original attorney that had been assigned it back in April had left the firm, so...
Madam Chair.
It kind of fell by the wayside a little bit.
I'd like this in, as an agenda item with some notice to the public that we'll be talking about it. In the interest of...
Have a town meeting preview on November 4th. Would that be an adequate time, you think?
Put it on our agenda as an agenda item?
For like a, almost a public hearing that we could discuss it.
I don't have a problem talking about it. I just want to make sure that we provide some advanced notice and publicize it so that people are aware that we're taking it up, so that we can, you know, it's, it's all about transparency is where I'm from.
From a practical standpoint, we've been complying with the state law, so we, you know, we've done the kennel notifications, we've...
I understand.
Seen all of that.
And we've seen it.
Yeah.
No, I understand that completely.
For the public, you know, I think it'd be good for us to just talk about it a couple times, so we don't get into answering...
November 4th for that? And we can help do the public outreach.
I believe so, yes. I should be.
Perfect. Okay, so, we're going to have a hearing on...
There's just things in here that, like, this, like, the select board may require, like, things like that, that...
Yeah.
That gets into shall or may.
How about 79 dash 7 dash 2, where the town administrator, the town clerk, select board chief of police shall, all of these folks shall inspect.
So, that is straight out of the state statute, as crazy as that is.
I'd sign up for inspecting kennels.
Appreciate that fully.
Somebody, it's in our...
So, it's, the natural, the natural resources officers are automatically a part of that list, and...
Yeah, they are.
Obviously, the expectation is that they would do it, you know.
Past the thousands.
I don't think we have to go. It says or.
I vote that Bob go out and inspect the kennels.
Sure, that's just what he wants to do as well.
All right, so we'll talk about this again, because I, we, you know, I've read it, but just once, and we've, it's a lot.
Well, we've got a lot of dog lovers in the town of Yarmouth.
We do.
They do. They should, they should have a chance to weigh in before we go to, go to town meeting.
Happy to answer questions, and we can also reach out to council if we need to make changes.
I think the controversial portion of this will be the removal of dog waste. Don't you think?
Let me tell you, one of the worst and hardest things I ever had to do in all my time here was have a dog hearing. That is the worst.
Oh, yeah.
So, that is one thing we did confirm.
My God.
It, it does not change anything with relating to dangerous dog hearings. You folks are still on board for all of that.
Really, we can't delegate that to the town?
I'm now, I'm now the person that's responsible as the licensing agent, though. It just, the law's kind of clarified that portion.
We can't delegate that to the town clerk?
I don't believe so. I believe, I believe it is specifically listed as you folks as well.
Limited in our ability to delegate the authority to handle those matters?
I think you can, but I think that's something we should talk about.
Okay.
I, I think delegating it to somebody like, you know, the chief of police.
The worst part of dogs. Dealing with the dangerousness in hearings.
That's really hard. All right, well, thank you for getting all this together, Mary.
No problem, thank you.
And then our, on page 16, article 12 is the zoning amendment for lobster sales. Go see that this evening. Article 13 is the zoning amendment for the boat storage, so we may have a recommended change for next meeting there. Article 14 is the adoption of the local comprehensive plan. And Judy and I, is, Judy's back there?
She's here.
We were just talking a little bit about, it sort of came up, I guess, new this evening, that it looks like we're going to need between $50,000 and $100,000 for the MacArthur study. And, I mean, I'm certain we could find some funds to transfer, and the question is whether we want to put an article on to try to fund that up, so we have adequate money to, you know, take a strong look. I was hoping we would get out of it without the design development piece, but it looks like...
Some work needs to be done on that, yeah. You might be able to negotiate that number down. But I, I would agree, Madam Chair. I think we should have some money set aside so that the committee can fulfill its obligations and provide a report. I do think the same question's going to pop up. Let's, let's assume for the sake of discussion, the townspeople want to go forward with the proposed new facility, and there's some concerns about the MacArthur School. I would suspect the board's going to want to at least encourage some consideration of the MacArthur School on the topic of a new school.
Yeah.
Because that's coming up. And hopefully, that can yield some information that might be useful for that as well. So, I, I think we can leave it up to the administrator and our team to sort of iron out the details, but I do think there's going to be some value in having an article, so I would, I would recommend that we add an article.
Place holder. I mean, we haven't closed the warrant yet, right?
No, that would be the 21st of October.
Yeah.
You can always pull it if we, if we have to, but I think it's, we should have.
Yeah. And so, and that's, the other thing that I'd like to consider is maybe moving some of these articles around.
Sure.
I think there'll be a ton of people leaving after the school feasibility study, and then I think there'll be another exodus after the lobster article. So, if there's a way we can keep them both to the end...
We'll put our claws in them.
You know, as much as, as much as the school officials and the school committee may not like it, I think, like I said, I think our challenge is going to be keeping, keeping, keeping people out of that town meeting. So, my pitch would be that we move up the LCP and move, you know, let's, let's give that, put that up closer, and then put the lobster one at the end, and maybe move the school feasibility stuff, study up. I'd like to keep...
Maybe put the school feasibility study, then do the zoning.
Yeah.
Swap, and then swap the LCP in earlier.
Exactly. I think that would make better sense.
Plastics is going to be big. Maybe if you put that, you know, towards the end, everybody will be gone.
No, I, I think plastics is fine. I don't, town meeting time is fine, golf capital expense, fine. I think in the past, what we've done is we've done the towns business up front, so, and, but I, I do think the zoning, I would recommend that we keep the lobsters to the end. Leave the best for last. And if they bring live lobsters, we have, if we have a lobster bake...
We need an example.
Then, right?
At least get chowdered.
I think we should have...
Lobster bisque, maybe.
Lobster bisque should be served at town meeting. And then I would encourage the LCP to come up earlier, so people can have at it. People won't be exhausted, because the reality is, is folks, by the time we get to 14, people are going to be like, right? And I, I do think in the end...
I think it'll go pretty fast.
Eh, I, I think in fairness to the planning board and the staff and all the people that have worked their tails off on it for so long, I would recommend moving that up, dealing with it early. Let's get, let's get this, let's get the discussion up early. So, I don't have a specific spot to recommend, but I wouldn't stick it to the end. I don't think that's fair to them, quite frankly.
Put it right in where the elementary school is. It's like article five, that'd come real quick.
Yeah. There you go.
Whatever Mark wants.
All right, well, I want, I want bisque. Am I going to get that? Am I going to, the bisque? You all in favor of bisque?
Busted bisque.
So moved?
Robust bisque.
Bisque?
Robust bisque it is.
Okay.
All right, vacancy. Are we done with town meeting warrant? You okay, Bob?
All set. Thank you very much.
All right. Discussion on filling the vacancy. Did we formally accept the resignation yet? I think we have to do...
I think we do that in the next...
We need to, well, maybe we should move that one up and accept it before we discuss.
Oh.
That would make sense.
So moved.
Okay.
If you don't mind just doing his.
I, I move that we accept the resignation of Joe Glynn from the Yarmouth Housing Authority Board of Commissioners and from the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District School Committee as indicated in his letter of September 29th, and we, we give him thanks for his service.
Seconded with reluctance.
Any discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Yes, thank you to Joe. But what the people at home should know is there are very strict guidelines on appointments, because these are both elected positions that he's resigned from. So, also in your packet, you have the regional agreement that outlines how vacancies are, are done, and if a vacancy occurs on the committee, such vacancies shall be filled within 30 days from the, from the board of selectmen of the member town in which the vacating office resided at the time of his election. The person so appointed shall be a resident of the town from which the vacancy occurred and shall serve until the next annual town election, at which time a successor shall be elected to serve the balance of the term. So, we have...
Till October 30th, then?
We have it from, yes. No, from today. Today, we accepted it.
October 29th, I guess.
No, we accepted it today.
So, it's from the, from the date of acceptance, right?
So, we have 30, we have 30 days from today.
No.
We've had this happen a couple of times in, in my time here, and, you know, there's different ways we can go about it. We can put out to the committee, we can appoint. It's totally up to us, so we need to talk about a process on how we want to do it, but we only have 30 days to make the appointment.
Would we ever want to put out some kind of notice asking for indications of interest from people?
Yes, yeah, I think so, but then we, we can do that, but then we, as a board, need to come up with a, a way of whittling that down, and how, what, what criteria are we going to use to see who the top three that we interview potentially would be? So...
Appearance in a dolphin sweatshirt. I think that's how we should judge it.
Okay. Last time I, I actually was appointed, I don't think I served even as one, for one meeting, but a select board member.
Right.
It says you, it's, it's a different agency. I'm sorry?
It's a great idea.
Yes.
It's only until the next election.
It's just, we need some short term, so the board can discuss how they want to do it, but I think we need to discuss it.
So, does that go on the agenda items?
No, it is on the agenda.
That's interesting.
We're discussing it now.
Oh, okay. Are you looking for volunteers?
I know, I'm looking for what the boards think.
Actually, the idea of having a select board member do it makes sense, because they're an elected official. At least you've got, you know, even on a temporary basis, it's still somebody that's been selected by the, by the town.
So, are you a candidate?
There's some merit. Oh.
I'd be okay with it.
You'd, you'd be okay serving?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm interested now, too, because...
So, one option, I guess, to, to address the chair's question about process, one option would be to consider a select board member to do it. Now, what we could do is solicit, but then based on...
We can wait and see.
And see what comes in the door.
Right.
And I think if there's an issue or a problem, it's good to know that we do have some select board members that are willing to step up and help out. I'm always a big believer in soliciting community interest and stuff like this, keeping Joyce busy with, with her appointments, activities.
I wouldn't say that this was an appointment for Joyce, though. I mean, this is a full board.
This is above my pay grade.
No, but the point is, is, no, but the, the, no, the main, main point is soliciting people to serve on committees.
Yeah.
And obviously, we make, we'll make the appointment. The question is, we're looking for three qualified candidates, right?
To consider.
Yeah, to consider, yeah.
And, and, but the question is, you know, we can do it several ways. I mean, potentially, we don't get three. That would be, I guess, the...
So, what we're going to have to do now is... So, what we're gonna have to do now is.
We'll have to each come up with our top three, and we'll see, and then we'll average those amongst ourselves.
We'll have to figure, yeah, we'll.
Give me your top three, each of you, and we can just, and see who comes to the top from that. We'll do an interview process. We'll have to set a date aside between now and 30 days.
So, this month?
So, would there have to be criteria? I mean, like. I think that it. I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a, the opportunity to put together a, I don't think we are, we. A full-blown thing. I think, I think we, we solicit, we advertise, we ask Lori to put it out. We each get all of the applicants given to us, and you can each give me the top three, and I'll average the top, whoever comes. I'm sure there'll be some similarities, but if not, we'll, we'll just say your top three, this one gets this points, and then we'll take the top three out of the five of our, and we'll interview them.
So, and looking ahead at our upcoming meetings.
We may need to set, schedule a separate meeting.
Special meeting.
Right.
Tuesday 23rd would be too early?
No, but I just don't think we're gonna have time within a regular meeting to give.
Oh, oh, if we're gonna interview.
You're gonna have to have a special meeting for this, I think.
I think so.
Yeah.
I think we'll have to come up with something. Let's see what we get. Maybe we get one good one, and that's it, and we don't have much of a decision to make, or maybe we get five, but let's put it out there, and at our next meeting, we will discuss a, a date. And I think we need to close the, I think we need to put it out now for the next, what do we say, 10 days? Is 10 days a sufficient enough time, you think, Mark?
I'm looking at the calendar right now. If it's a 30-day notice, then we have until November 7th to make a decision. The board meets on November 4th. I'd like to think that we could take this up on November 4th as a board, and so perhaps what we do is we get applications.
Election day, though. Are we meeting on the 4th? Are we meeting on the 4th? It's election.
Election day for the town of Barnstable.
My calendar is election day.
Yeah, it's election day for cities in Massachusetts.
Okay.
We could, we could see if Michelle Wu would be interested in doing the school board thing if she doesn't.
No, I'm all set with that.
My recommendation is you probably wanna get all your applications in by the 28th or the 29th, so that they can be collected, pulled together, and then distributed to the board by the end of the week. Excuse me, then, right? Don't you think?
Yeah. No, that sounds like a good time for, I mean, then.
No, I don't think that gives us enough time.
In by the 28th?
So, you're saying interview on the 4th?
Yeah.
And make a decision on the 4th?
That's what he was saying.
That's what I just wanna make sure.
I think we're not sure that we'll have multiple candidates.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean.
All right, if we do, we can play it by ear.
And, and, and I'm comfortable with the chair setting the, I mean, you're setting the agenda, and you set the agenda typically, what, on the Thursday?
It would be on the 30th.
Thursday, the 30th?
Yep.
Right, so if all the applications come in on the 28th, and again, I'm comfortable with you perusing them to see that.
Here's the problem, though. We gotta, we gotta give you all time to peruse them, and give me your top three to see if they're even available on that short notice. So, you're gonna say on, we're gonna get them on Thursday, on Friday.
We'll get them on Tuesday, the 28th.
Okay.
Or get them on Monday, the 27th.
And you, and they're gonna be available on the 4th for an interview. Okay, we can try it. I think that's.
Yeah, I think even in the advertisement, you could make it that the board will be, anticipates making a decision on the 4th, and the candidates that, you know, are interested should be at least notified that the 4th will be a date of interviews.
So that they already, you know that going in.
They'll know ahead of time.
Yeah, they go, know.
And I'm happy to, Madam Chair, if, if we wanna invite others in the audience that might have some thoughts on this, I'm, I'm willing to entertain them, but I think that's a pretty ambitious schedule, and we're gonna need the support from the school committee, right? Is that what you're suggesting? In terms of soliciting applications? Is that what you're?
That seems like a good group to ask, but I, I assume we would circulate with, with social media.
Who would be doing the work and providing the notice? Who would be doing the work?
It's our appointment.
No, I understand.
We need to advertise it.
So, who on our staff, then, would be doing that?
We'll, we'll do it.
Lori?
Do it?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Well, I heard someone mention Lori is a name. I.
Lori Sullivan.
We'll have the, the communications person help.
Communications gonna advertise, put it on the website, put it on the social media.
As long as I know who that is, I mean, I'm just.
I was talking about our media, our communications team trying to get the information out there.
Typically not the thing that a communications person does, but if that's.
Then you're gonna need to, because we're, we need to make an appointment within 30 days. And should we ask the superintendent if he has any comments?
Sure.
Yes.
Sitting here all evening?
Yeah.
He just likes to listen to us. It's fun.
Mark Smith, Superintendent, Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District. Yeah, so, again, as has already been stated, it is your appointment by the regional agreement, so our role really, and you're appointing my governance board, really, so my, my role is just to support the process as the superintendent, and the committee wants to just, you know, they're obviously looking for their next partner in, in providing governance. So, from my role, I just wanna be able to support. So, once the, the town gets the messaging, we, we have access, obviously, to folks that you might not have direct access to, so we'd be happy to put it out on our direct messaging to all of our parents. And we, and put it out on our social media, just to get the word out as wide and far as possible. Be happy to, you know, augment your, your communication channels with ours.
And last time we did this, it was somebody that would have interest in serving and running. You know, it takes, everybody should know it. It takes some time to understand the process, and from, you know, November to May, April, May, yes, you'll, you'll be there. We need, you know, we need our town representative, but at the same time, it's, it's a lot of undertaking, so hopefully it was, it will be somebody who will consider, and that's what happened the last time. We ended up appointing somebody who, who was planning on running, you know, for some continuity, so to speak, but.
We have two sitting members, one from both towns, who their original sort of foray into the school committee was through this type of an appointment, and then reran, and now are, you know, longstanding members and are great contributors to the school district. So, I agree. This is a great way for somebody who's looking to, you know, get started and, and learn, and, and then become, you know, an elected member of the group.
Yeah, I just have one question that I just need to ask. Is there, is there, obviously, all the business of the school committee is important, but is there any pressing issue that would require us to take that into consideration as we're deliberating on this? Do you have a meeting coming up where?
What's your budget vote?
The, I mean, the budget process will start in, there's, the school committee's deeper involvement in the, in the budget process starts in January.
January, so to Mark's point, is there anything before that that's critical?
Nothing super pressing that we have on the burners, some policy changes that are coming.
There's just, there's always a sensitivity in Yarmouth that, you know, we, if there's a critical vote on important school business, that we not let that fall by the wayside.
Yeah, I mean, what, you know, what's been discussed tonight, obviously, the, the ME small feasibility is our next sort of big thing that's coming up, but at this point, it's regular school business. Again, the school committee's got some policies coming up regarding graduation requirements, and stuff coming down from the state that we need to adopt, some things regarding the CTE. There's some state changes that largely affect the technical schools, but middle schools have a piece in it, so we have to adopt some policy changes, but again, nothing like super critical or heavy. And then the, the big thing, well, the school committee will get involved in the, the budget development, hot and heavy, starting in January.
All right.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So, any, any student at DY who's 18, a resident of Yarmouth, and has registered to vote, could run? Maybe we should check with the math department, see who'd be good for budgets.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, we'll get that out as fast as possible, and thank you for sharing that information. It'll be helpful, and I'm sure we'll get some great people. And then, on the housing authority, that's gonna be taken up at a different agenda?
I don't think that there is a, I'm sure that there is a process. I'm not, I just don't think it's as critical as our, it's very specific, the regional agreement that we have 30 days. I don't know if there's votes or things that are.
I just need to research that a tiny bit more.
Okay.
Mary, do you have, I mean, I hate to just plug Mary. Mary's hanging out for them. Might as well ask her. She's the town clerk.
I don't believe there's a timeframe on it. However, I do believe it is a, a vote of a, of the joint committees, both the select board and the housing authority, I think, have to do the vote at a joint meeting. That is my, that is my recollection. I will have to double-check that as well. But I, I believe that's typically how those positions get filled. It's a joint meeting, and it is, and it is a joint vote of both boards. And I don't know, I don't recall whether it is.
How many vacancies are on that right now?
I'd have to double-check. There's definitely more than one.
I know.
I think there's a, I think the tenant vacancy is still out there, and then Joe's vacancy as well.
There's a total of how many?
And I don't know whether they ever got an appointment for their state appointee, because I know that state appointee was a vacancy, was a holdover for a while as well.
That's in the process of being nailed down.
So, we can check into all of that, but like I said, I, I don't remember whether it's a cumulative vote of, in total of both boards together, or whether it's a, it has to be a unanimous vote of both boards, but I can certainly look into that this week for you.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have that back on the agenda.
Can also bring up Forest Road, too.
Any select board members out there?
Right, why not, right?
Not now.
Why not?
All right. They don't even have any people. Board and committee.
Okay, on the, on the quieter end of personnel replacement, we have two appointments. One is Stephen Garner. I nominate him for a full appointment for three years to the Energy Committee, and that's for a term that would end in September 2028.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the second one is Mary Johnson. I nominate her for an alternate position on the Recreation Commission, and that's an appointment to serve through July 26th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, my job was easy this week.
There you go.
Great. You don't wanna talk about the policy again? Don't you miss that? Should, we should just, for old times' sake.
A different one.
All right. Next, we have. Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes for the January 7th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those pass. Upcoming agenda review, we just added November 4th to do interviews and appointment.
Kennel rules?
Yep. Well, that's gonna be in our, where is the, what was the date that you said we were gonna do the pre-town meeting?
November 4th, so we wanna put a pre-town meeting, town meeting preview, and that, review the dog bylaw.
Bylaw.
Detail.
And interview and appoint DY.
It's a busy one.
It's gonna be a busy schedule. And we, and we already put, the, the regional dispatch was on for tonight, and we had to move it. We're not gonna be able to get to all of it, so, I don't know. Maybe they won't be, were they ready, Bob, for?
I think they'll be ready for November 4th. They, they really appreciated the additional time, quite frankly.
I mean, do, is it something that we maybe can do December 2nd?
Yeah, it, absolutely. We, we were keeping the pressure on, because the select board requested an update.
We definitely want them back. I'm just, now that we've, we have to do interviews.
December 2 would be perfect for them.
And which is that, that we're moving?
The regional dispatch update, because we've got a couple irons in the fire, meetings we're setting up, so probably going out to December and give us more to update on.
Recognition retirements. All right, yep. Anybody, I think we're full up for the next couple of weeks. So, we'll revisit it at our next meeting and see what we got going forward from there, because. Okay, perfect. All right, any individual items?
I just wanted to, the letter from CONSCOM.
Yep.
What are we doing with that?
Letter that is in our.
Regarding the drought, yes.
I think we agreed at a prior meeting that we were gonna take up water conservation and enforcement and education after town meeting.
So, that should be on our.
That's, that's a future agenda item.
Yeah.
We agreed to that at the last meeting.
We can try the 12th, too.
Okay.
Where is it? Down there?
What, December 12?
I don't see it down the bottom. Is it down the bottom?
It's not on here yet.
Yeah.
I have it handwritten on.
I think we need to do drought regulations 12th, too.
On, in, on December 2nd?
12th, too, yep.
Drought regulations. Okay. And then, the, and it's, this is, again, I, I don't know how these are handled. Oliver's noise, is that a departmental violation of noise ordinance? I should not.
No, we can't talk, we shouldn't be talking about that.
Okay.
Bob will work it out, and if it's, if it's found to be, we, it has to be found to be a violation before we discuss it, so we can't, we can't, we shouldn't even say that in public, because.
Yoki doki.
We don't know where that's at yet. Bob, you're looking into that?
Yes, that is correct. We do have a complaint regarding noise, and we're evaluating it right now.
So, just looking back on some of the plans for the future in terms of discussing a cap on free cash, is that something that?
Cap?
A cap?
I don't know what you mean by cap.
So, cap on free cash usage, there's only so much you can take out of free cash. It was something that was discussed last year.
You can't, you have to, you have to take it.
Right, but there's a limit to how much you can take, is what, this was recommended.
There isn't, there isn't. What it is, is it's, it's a percentage of the overall budget that gets put into free cash that's capped. Once you have the free cash certified, you don't, you don't, you don't cap that.
Okay, this, this was from the CBC, and they recommended discussing a cap on free cash usage to ensure fiscal sustainability.
Yeah, well.
Free cash should not be used for recurring expenses.
No, that's true, and that never has been. That's, that's a policy, that's already a policy.
I don't support that being an agenda item.
No, I just wonder, but it is a policy.
We have financial policies that, that govern the free cash, and that, there was a slightly different issue that, that they were taking up, that, you know, the, the idea is to, we've been working to create a capital stabilization fund, and we appropriated a million dollars.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, we're moving in that direction, but you can't adopt some rash policy. I think the overall concern is, maybe in the future, we might not have enough free cash to do as many capital improvements, but, you know, it's, it's kinda, it's addressed in the town's financial policies. There's nothing that you could vote on it now that would be helpful.
Gotcha. And, and they, so what I'm trying to find out, if the policy has changed based on these recommendations, so raising the minimum capital request threshold from 10 grand to 25 grand, did that?
We, we haven't changed, the policies are adopted by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so.
We have not voted on any changes regarding our financial policies.
Should we talk about it?
Our financial, I would recommend that if you haven't reviewed our financial policies, I would recommend that you look at them.
No, but the capital.
These are changes that some have been recommended.
Yeah, last year, at the end of the capital budget, at the, they made a presentation, and, and there was, there was a point in time at the end that they did discuss the fact that the threshold was kind of low, I believe, for, for it to be considered capital, and not just a routine expense of the budget.
Right.
So.
Better reflecting inflation.
Yeah, but that's a budget policy. That's not, that's not a financial policy.
I'm, I'm trying to get educated, Mark.
Okay.
Well, what happens is there's a certain dollar amount that it goes to capital, where they request, so I think that what, that's something that Bob needs to kind of figure out how, how, you know, if you look at our budget over the past many years, you know, we, our, our wages increase by contractual limits, but, but most of the time, the expense account does not increase at all. I mean, they don't get an increase. And, and so, if they need something, the only opportunity for them is to try to get it through a capital.
So, just so that I understand, Liz, what you're, what you're asking, was this a set of recommendations from?
CBC.
The what? The Capital Budget Committee?
Yes.
Okay. We have so many committees, I can't keep track.
Well, I don't blame you.
That, that's why I'm asking, 'cause I'm.
No, well, with CBC, I just don't know what CBC means, so it's the Capital Budget Committee. What I would recommend is that we all become from, reacquainted with whatever those recommendations were, and when we take up the capital budget.
It's gonna be coming in there, the timeframe for the submission of the capital budget to the select board is November 28th, so in December, we'll have them in, and I don't think that it's wise to jump into any financial policy changes in, you know, the intervening time. I mean, I, I, I think that they were just concerns that they were raising. We might run out of free cash, some of the capitals are small. I, I, I don't think right now is the right time to make any of these big financial changes.
Okay, I'll, I'll put this aside until they come in, and then I can raise these questions. Does that make sense?
Sort of. I mean, a little part of it is that, look, if I was on the Capital Budget Committee, I'd, I'd tell you, you know, you, you guys need to go for an override. And, and you need to set aside a recurring.
We used to have a.
Amount of money that you're gonna use to fund all these capital improvements into the future, because you're, you know, you're gonna run out of free cash. But, you know, then if I was on the select board, I'd say, well, just hold on a second.
No, we used to have, we used to have a 1.5 million in the, every year.
Well, we, we have a, a 1.5 million is, you know, there's the money that we have that goes to the roadway maintenance, you know, so.
Yeah, no, but we had it for capital and roadway. We had it at one point in time built into our budget.
Right, but you don't have it now.
No, I know.
And if you were to put it in now, you'd, you'd either have to cut other budgets or go for an override. And, and so, the idea, and, and it's also, you know, we have had in recent years, a little bit more free cash than the town had previously. Right, so the idea that you say, well, well, we're not gonna use free cash for capital improvements anymore, you know, it's just, it's, it's not wise to do financially, but it's certainly advisable to look at the issue of how much free cash is going there, and, and, you know, our long-term financial plan is gonna have to take that into account. But like a knee-jerk reaction, we're gonna set these artificial policies that make it so that we don't have any money for capital items, or that we're preventing departments from requesting capital items, because we're certainly not gonna put it in their budget. But a lot of their other recommendations, which I, you know, you should've started with, because the first thing they were saying, well, well, we need to take, well, you know, half the stuff that's, people are requesting for capital, and, and I love the Capital Budget Committee, I mean, they're great, they're doing a great job, but like, I'd say, they say, well, you, you people need to put this stuff in your operating budget. You know what I mean? Right? But, but, but we're up against. against two and a half, so there's no money in the operating budget that, so it's, it's, it's a balance.
Okay.
So I, I say right now what we focus on, look at the requests, see how much money we have, see what we're recommending, if there's, if there's a change you want to make, make it based on that, not just a general thing that.
Policy thing.
Because this, it's like a double-edged sword, every action you take has an equal.
It has a ripple, it has a ripple effect.
Different.
Right.
Every year's different.
If we wanted to change budget policy, we had it on the agenda at 7:40.
But she did bring it up at that point in time.
Oh, at 7:40?
She did and she said she was going to bring it up later.
I didn't think it was appropriate then, so I waited till into July.
No, no, it's a, it's a budget policy issue.
So one last one is the HERO Act, is, is that being reviewed, because that, last year we passed it and we said we'd look at it again this year, so it's going to be coming up, but we should consider that one.
Yeah, that's a good one, because we did talk about phasing it in overtime.
See, I do.
But that'll, but that'll be for annual, not for.
Exactly, but it, but it's, if they're looking at the budget, it's going to be next.
Perfect, any other individual items?
No. Yes, I had a simple request, I was asked how to find out when the select board was meeting and it occurred to me that actually a couple of years ago, when I wasn't here, when I was out there. I used to wonder about that and I would get in touch with Mary Allison, ask her, and she'd always say, it's in the packet, but, you know, it's a chart and, and it, it looks like it's.
Well, on the topics, on the town website.
What, what people need is just like, simple calendar, if we could put that somewhere on the town website.
There is a calendar.
Agenda calendar.
And the meetings are on there and I've, I see that every week now they're doing the list of meetings.
They're trying to get that calendar higher because it's way, it's been way down, you end up scrolling and eventually you just give up, but part of the plan down the hall there is to get it higher, so it's more relevant.
I guess I think the select board meetings, I mean, I know we have like the, the month calendars that show the different things and it's.
That's what their upcoming is helpful.
But I think it would be a big help if, if we had just a list of, of course it could change because, you know, like November 4th, but I think it would be a big help to people because it, not agenda items, ready, just the dates, because we're supposed to be.
Talking about the website?
Huh?
The website?
On our, on the town website.
Yeah.
I think they're doing a redo, I mean, we may want to get an update soon, maybe that's a future agenda item.
Oh, so maybe they're already doing that.
They're working on a redo of the website, aren't they, Bob?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
So that's, did you mention that to them as one of the suggestions? Because they were soliciting suggestions.
I'll, I'll, I'll take that, we'll see if we can get, well, check on the calendar and, and see how far out she's going, I think there's no reason why we can't put on the calendar as far as we've planned, like we have the meetings planned through December 30 right now, we know when they're going to be, so we'll put them on the calendar and then when we update the website, we'll do even better.
Yeah, with a separate little, I mean, because people, people want to hear us possibly? It's mysterious to me, but.
No, there are other, in other towns, for example, the select board meetings and their agendas are posted in the local newspaper, so if you are, for example, a resident of Chatham, when you get the Chronicle.
I get the Chronicle, I love them.
Yeah, it's a great newspaper, when you get the Chronicle on Wednesday or Thursday, what it has is the agenda for next week's select board meeting.
Nice.
So that you're, and it's right there, it's very.
You're never going to get that published on a Wednesday or Thursday because we can.
Well, the registers are posted anyway.
On Friday.
Well, Falmouth Enterprise does it as well, so Falmouth, they will have the following week's select board agenda so that it's in, it's in broad, broad public awareness.
All right, Dorcas, do you have any items?
I do not.
Mark?
No.
All right, consent agenda, consent agenda, we have the Division of Natural Resources Amendment to the Shellfish Regulations and donations for Parks and Rec, for the Parkers River Landing, oh, boardwalk plants, that's really long, I don't know how people like that.
Yeah, I think we should come up with a new name.
That's a lot of money.
I'll do a survey on Facebook under my alias.
I move a consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Bob, take it away.
Okay, just a few items I want to make sure you're aware of and I, I thank Mark for his efforts on the Affordable Housing Trust, we had a meeting today with the proposed, developers of the proposed Chapter 40B comprehensive permit that's out on 897, the subject of your letter, and, you know, just, I, I'm, I'm glad we sent a, a real strong letter to them and we told them that they were going to get another strong letter, we kind of hit them over the head and suffice to say, we have an additional meeting that is scheduled for, I think it's October 16, is it, and, you know, we've asked them, quite frankly, to redesign their project and come back to us and that, you know, we pointed out all the problems, so we may have some options, we're trying to investigate and create options for improving that and we're, everyone's got their sleeves rolled up and, you know, the housing people, planning people, and so we're working on that and we'll have more updates for you.
The onus is on them, if I could just add, Bob, the onus is on them to come up with a better plan and that's what we're going to hold them to and I didn't use any four-letter words in the, the meeting.
No, Mark did a great job, but we were very strong, we sort of double teamed them and, and they got, they got the message, we'll see how much it, it sinks in, but we're, we're working on that, I mean, there's a lot of active work going, going into that and I, and I just want to say on that, having the vision that's created through the comprehensive plan is very, very helpful, I mean, without that vision, it's hard to, to talk turkey with folks, but, but there, clearly we have a, it's a Cape Cod, mixed-use, village-style development that, that we're pushing. Another item I, I wanted to mention that, I, I know you've got, we've got the Matices Utilization Committee coming in November 4 for an update, we received some great news that when we get to the implementation phase where it's out of the committee and we're ready to start a project, we were successful in receiving a $225,000 implementation grant from the Commonwealth of Mass and, and that's something.
Where's that from?
It's from, through Mass Development, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Right, good.
And I really need to hand it to Bill Scott, put that application in, we sort of planned it before he left and so, thank you, Bill, for that and that'll help us, there's a lot of things that we're going to need to do to try to, it looks like there's a lot of public-private type partnerships that are going to be associated with the Matices, so I, I think that it would be great to, to talk to the committee about a timeframe for having the, you know, their process wrapped up so we could kind of move into the next phase of possible implementation and I think they may be ready to start talking about that when they come in and I just want to let you know, we had a great department head meeting last week, went over in detail, select board goals and, and those, you know, always, always are like fabulous with the departments and, and everyone is really rallying around the goals and we also welcomed Megan Eldrich, that was her first department head meeting, so it's really great to have her on board, last week also David Aronson, he was with us this evening, started at the library and in a, a couple of weeks, few weeks, we've got Amy coming on board, so things are really shaping up on the staff end of things and finally, I, I wanted to, to mention too, is that, you know, we discussed the plastics reduction and obviously the repeal of the former petition, it's just a small piece of that process and we had a, a great meeting today and planned some very detailed public outreach, now that the Board of Health has adopted those regulations, we're going to be doing videos, we're going to be doing press releases and, and I, I honestly think that it's a, a cause for celebration to be able to have put together a community-wide strategy with all of the, such diverse stakeholders and the business interests and environmental interests and also set the tone, had some good leadership for Cape Cod with a similar set of recommendations that are being used in other communities, I think we have Cape Cod really on the get rid of plastic in food service sort of train at this point and there's a lot to be proud of for our town in that, so we're going to try to get that word out so by the time we get to town meeting, people know exactly why we're there, what we're going to achieve, it, it's really a, a sort of a rallying point, so everyone's working on that and those are just a couple of key issues I wanted to make sure you folks were up on, another thing I, I wanted to add to, I just got this in late, that Representative Diggs has proposed a bill that would jumpstart the process for having the communities on the Cape that were left out designated as seasonal communities under the Housing Act and there's a public hearing next Wednesday, the 15th, it's available on Zoom, I just got the notice and I'll, I'll send that out, if anyone's interested in making any testimony, I don't think you have to go all the way up to Boston because, you know, they're having a hybrid public hearing on it, but I wanted to make you aware of that.
Who's holding the hearing?
It is the committee that it, so it's.
EOA?
Legislative Committee that, that is holding a public hearing on it, they have, there's a list of hearings that they're having on next Wednesday.
And that's next Wednesday?
And I, I've got the notice, I've got the time, I've got everything, I can, I can send that.
Can you forward that to folks, just let us all know, then, then we can make a decision as to whether or not we can chime in. Actually, these Zoom hearings are, they work, I've watched several legislative hearings in which people have been given the opportunity to zoom in from distances far and wide and they've been very informative.